of this study. So just a little recap, last year we hosted a session for city council study session at the library that was jointly held with the library board. And we were able to give some updates about some of the space challenges as well as some of the public use areas that have had to change and talk about our digital and physical use. And we left that meeting with a lot of questions, which has led us really to this point. Since last year, the library board voted unanimously that a study really was in order to identify how we should be providing library services over the next five to 20 years. And so you approved a 50 50 split for this survey for the 20 study for this 2024 budget. Again, that's split with levy and then also library reserves. Thankfully, our Rochester Public Library Foundation also kicked in $40,000 for this study to support the library side. Our visitor count, program attendance, circulation all continue to show increases as we continue that recovery out of the pandemic. You'll see our spaces, we work really hard to maximize the footprint that we have. That first picture is that study room that or that meeting room that once was a public meeting space and is now used so that we can stage our outreach events, which continue to be very important, getting into schools, getting into Hawthorne, doing some outreach to the community. The middle picture, you'll notice we were able to clear some of our reference materials and weed out some of our materials to create space for the converto lab. That is a self-service station, allowing folks the ability to digitize their older media into newer formats that are more usable. That self-service station has about 100 uses every month. It's very, very popular. And we continue to have really popular events like our recently, we had our mega glow night, which was glow sticks and babies, 283 people on a Tuesday night in February. Again, last year at the end of the study session, so many questions from all of you. Can we be everything to everyone? What innovation should we be looking at? How does the bookmobile fit into this? What factors are affecting access to library resources? And we continue to have those questions as well. I need to note that I did not put this together all by myself. We had lots of input from library board. We also had Jacob Metz, the Harvard fellow who is here looking at accessibility. We also had a teammate from community development as well as representative from the county, all putting this information together. And one of the pieces of information that everybody really wanted to look at was this information from 1995 to today, obviously population that continues to grow. Our circulation has grown 99%. A lot of that is in the digital space and our collection size has grown 46%. And you'll see those last two numbers, registered borrowers and visits. Those were on a forward upward trajectory. A lot of that decline happened since the pandemic times and construction flood pandemic. Those years that we like to forget about, but I'll talk a little bit more about those numbers as well. We continue to watch this number. This is one that's really important and valued by us. We know that on average, 33.86% of households in Olmsted County have a library card. And that is low. But what's more shocking, I guess, or I guess troubling that we'd like to learn more about in this study is how that differs by census tract. You can see on this slide, and I know it's really tiny and I apologize for that. On the low end of the the census tracts, we have library card saturation rate as low as 28.5%. We tend to see that in census tracts that also have lower median income, higher rates of poverty. On the other end of that spectrum, we know that we have 47.77% of households that have a card in that particular census tract, and we have higher median income and fewer families that are in poverty. So we know there's some disparity that does exist. Our book box, we we locked out partnering with the fire department and we chose fire station number four for logistical reasons. That happened to be in an area where we had three census tracts with lower cardholder saturation rates. So we placed the book box there. We saw an increase in all three of those census tracts when we had the book box there, which is still there. And but we're unsure if they're if the residents are are crossing into using the main library or if they're just sticking with the book box. We had about 1,000 items that were borrowed. So it wasn't a huge significant usage, but we did see an uptick initially from the launch of the book box and cardholder rates. When we look at the community survey, again, I think I showed this last year, overall 90% rating. People really do like the library and we appreciate that. But we see some differences by by wards in how folks are rating library services. And we'd like to know why, a little more about why. For our circulation, again, like I said, we are up 99%, large chunk of that is in the digital space. You'll see in 2019, we actually circulated more physical items. Starting in 2019, as you may remember, when we shifted into the pandemic, we shifted our dollars because folks could not get to the library, we shifted our dollars more towards digital. We have spent more on our digital collection than our physical collection since 2019. So because the demand is there and we're trying to fill that demand, keep our wait times as manageable and maintained as possible in both the digital space and in the physical space, we continue to see those wait times increase for library holds. So we do continue to see a demand on on both our physical and our digital. When it comes to youth, though, we do know that physical is is it. Parents really like to have their kids with physical books. 86% of the youth materials were physical, not the digital format. So we know that's where physical, the physical collection really shines. Overall, our collection size has grown 46%, like I mentioned before, and that's compared to 1995. It is actually smaller than it used to be, though. We have had to, you know, you don't keep materials forever. You want to keep your collection fresh. And we just really don't have additional space to add additional shelving. So we know that we used to have a larger physical collection. Right now, we have about the same size collection as we did in 2005 when it comes to physical, about 4,000 items difference. So a little over 400,000 items, a lot of items, but a 4,000 number of items difference in in that physical collection is is significant, being the same size that we were in in 2005. Here's where we start to see some decreases. And we we have a couple of theories, a couple of ideas, and again, want more information from this study. A large number of our decrease in borrowers, a lot of that happened, again, construction flood and pandemic. But we do have fewer borrowers than we had in 1995. Now, there are some other factors. A lot of households just use one card. It's really easy. If you've had multiple children and have had to keep track of their library books, you get what I'm saying. It can be challenging. We did increase our limits per individual card to make it much easier for our customers. And so that has been adjusted and that can be one of the reasons. We do clean our our records up more quickly than we probably did in 1995. We don't have overdue fees that we need to, you know, keep the records for a long time like we did in 1995. And then when people are using our computers, we used to have them sign up for an internet pass. Now we just give them guest passes to use the internet, again, trying to make that as easy and seamless and user friendly as possible. And our instant digital cards, you can instantly try and get a card through Libby right now when you pull out your phone. And so we're seeing a lot of people using that versus a physical library card. Our library visits have decreased since 1995. Again, we were on that trajectory upwards. And then with construction flood and pandemic, we did see a big decrease. However, we continue to see a year over year increase in the number of people visiting the library. We are continue to be committed to equity. We will continue to be committed to equity. And that's why this study is so important to me. That's why it's really important to our team and to the library board. We want to make sure that the way we are delivering services and what we have to offer and how you get in and out of our building is being welcoming and inclusive to all. Again, we were highlighted in 2018 with the national medal. And a lot of that was for our commitment to equity. And we continue to have a mission of welcoming all to connect and learn. And we want to make sure that our, again, our services line up with that. So this is where the RFP comes in, and this is our hope for this study to give us a clearer picture, to provide clarity both to city council, to the library board, to library staff on how we should be delivering our services, looking for a facilities and operations master plan at the end of this process, five to 20 years out, a phased approach of how we should be delivering those. We want it to be visionary, yet attainable and very comprehensive, not just looking at building, not just looking at the bookmobile, not just looking at physical versus digital collection use, but really being comprehensive and also aligning with council priorities and library board's strategic plan. In our document, in the draft document that you saw in your packet, we did note all of these different plans because there's so much happening in our city. And this is something that any consultant will need to be aware of that's happening here. We anticipate a very community engaged process that is really important to the planning team that worked on this RFP. We want to find the consultant that really engages the community well and, you know, provides both cultural and accessibility insight as well as equity just throughout this entire process. Again, wanting that clarity for council and the library board and also to develop some meaningful benchmark data, which we have struggled to really compare ourselves to. We're anticipating a thorough evaluation of the current services that we offer. Again, main library, bookmobile, bookbox, physical, digital, and look for those challenges and those opportunities. And again, looking at the downtown location, the the building itself, any deficiencies that currently exist with what's within the footprint, any opportunities for improvement? And then assessing all of the different offerings and programs outreach technology that we have. Back to that benchmark data, just for a second, we have struggled to find a comparison. Libraries represent their communities, so it can be challenging to find a like for like. We are an apples, big shiny wonderful apple and some oranges. So we really struggle to find that comparison data because we have a single location and a bookmobile. These libraries are libraries that the Public Library Association lumps us together in peer groups and they base those peer groups. Some of it's regionally, some of it is demographic data, racial demographics and education level. And so we're in peer group 10. The other libraries that fit in this peer group include these libraries. What's challenging with that is the peer group includes a library with, you know, 1,000 people in the community, all the way up to the Chicago Public Library System. So when we even just narrowed that list of 144 libraries down to these that serve a population of 80,000 to 310, 11,000, these are the libraries that we compare to, again, not an apples to apples comparison. When we look at nationwide, not even looking at the Public Library Association benchmark data, there are not over 9,000 libraries in the United States. There are 606 that serve a population of our our size. And we went low and high to to try and find some comparison. And for those serving anywhere between 77,000 people to over 330,000 people, only about 18% have one location and then even fewer have one location plus one bookmobile. So again, struggle to find that comparative data, but consultants that do this work all the time are able to find better comparisons that can, again, help inform. The needs assessment that we're looking for is aligning with what's happening within the city, identifying our key service areas, again, evaluating our current services and exploring those challenges that we have. At the end, we want this facilities and operations master plan, a document that we can refer to to help guide us to provide that clarity that we're looking for, provide some recommendations for future solutions as well as some phased implementation of any of those recommendations. And and just that overall analysis of what we have and what we're offering to the community and why some of those disparities do exist by census tract and really get that that deep community-led feedback. So what are we missing and what are you hoping for that can better help inform you as as a council? Thank you so much. Any questions or comments to start us off? Councilmember Keen?
Yes, again, I appreciate the follow-up and the connection to our meeting in January 2023. And I really do like that idea of trying to get all the things, but not just a facility study or not just looking at visits to try to do more of a comprehensive thing. I think that's a good way to go. Are there, I mean, would you expect certain groups that kind of have library expertise to bid on this? Local, further away, is there, I'm just trying to see if this is just a generic facilitator or if it's somebody with library-like skills?
I think both do exist, right? There are experts that do this work on a national level. They're very well known among libraries, and I think there are some right here within our state as well.
Okay, all right. I appreciate that you sort of like do this sort of like the bigger picture. And I think there there is, you know, a subset of people that our library is probably the most important asset in the city to them. That's a small subset. There's others that look at our parks. There's others that look at different groups. The one thing I was trying to get, like, when I look at the RFP and you're asking if I have any help or anything that I want to make sure gets covered, I am just trying to understand scoping. And I know I appreciate that you tried to say we have some core values with equity in the community and and some of these other things. But back on the facilities thing, is it still like open? It says they could come back with branches or they could come back with two more floors? Or is there any scoping that says this is the bounds of which we're binding this assessment?
I have the same question. Yeah, and I feel like we didn't hear a clear direction from council when we met last year. There were some suggestions of should we have a fleet of bookmobiles? Should we have branches? Should we have one location? So it is very broad.
Okay, let me just listen to my peers here and see where we go. Thanks.
Councilmember Palmer?
I've got a couple of questions. And when was the last time we did the facilities review? Because if I remember right, five or six years ago, you wanted a new building. When was that? Or how did you get basis on that?
So we did have a narrow scope, was not a broad facilities and operations master plan. I don't believe we've ever had. I'm turning to my colleagues that have been in the library for a very long time. And there has not been a broad, comprehensive facility and operations master plan document. And I think I brought that up last year, you know, we really look towards Paul for being this trendsetter of having a document that can be looked at and referred to that we didn't have. So it was a very smaller, just looking at the building, which I think goes back to being much more broad in in this study.
Well, back in 2018, we had lots of people telling us that they wanted a new building. And so you're saying that was done just randomly, not without a study?
That was done with a specific building-only programming, the building study.
Okay.
It was limited in scope.
You brought up Park and Rec, and Park and Rec basically touches almost everybody in Rochester. So when you go talk to people, somebody, you have a third of your households in Rochester only only visit or have a card. Doesn't that worry you?
It absolutely does. I'm glad you said that because in the state of Minnesota, I mean, it's it's not 100%, right? There are going to be folks that don't use the library. And I wish I had the data from 1995, what that looked like. In the state of Minnesota, about 45% of people have a library card. So to me, we should at least be hitting the bare minimum. And especially in a library that's or in a community that's very well-educated, values innovation, values education and learning, to not even hit that bare minimum is very concerning. Yeah.
Well, I guess I'm looking at, you know, the library is romantic to some people, but I see your borrowers are down 19% and your visits are down by 9.7% and the city of Rochester is doubled. I mean, if somebody else came to me and said, geez, our numbers are down, I'd be worried about why my numbers are down. And I know you do surveys, but most of the surveys are done with people in the library, correct? So you're not hearing two thirds of Rochester who aren't in the library and you don't ask them why?
So and that's where we rely on that community survey data that says 90% of people, which again, that also makes me say why? Why are folks saying 90%? Again, that's different based on ward. But why are 90% of people saying they have a very positive rating of the library? And the other part of your question, I'm sorry.
I don't remember.
Okay.
And so the other, the other part of this is that that when you show your economic, you know, a number of people or the economics of it, you know, we have the the minority, not minority population, but the but the lower income people aren't coming to the library, but we're serving people with $215,000 income. So, I mean, is this just going to be for higher income people and we're going to leave it at that?
I personally want it for everyone. The library, we are committed. That is our, that is our mission to be welcoming, to connect and learn. Like, that's what we want to do for everyone, all income levels, to see it not be close to that 45% across the board, but only see it above 45% in in a sense, a few of those census tracts, which tend to have higher income, to me is concerning. I think that is an equity issue and a challenge and something that you also that you asked about, you know, this reduction, 19% in cardholders, 9% in visits. But our circulation is up 99% and our population is up 52%, which to me says we've got fewer folks that might be accessing more of what we have. And what I would like to see is all of it shared with everyone. I think that's really important. All income levels, all abilities.
I guess for me, a base to understand why why we're not getting the lower income people, why we're having fewer visits, why? To me, that'd be more interesting than going out for an RFP, saying we want a new building and this is the way we're going to get it. Because that's what parks did. So I mean, that's that's where my cynical part of this is.
Yeah, I really truly believe that we're going to get that valuable information. I mean, this is, this is why this study is very broad, is not just focused on single building and what can we do right here with just this single building, but very broad and open-ended.
I think.
I guess she wants to talk.
Yeah, from previous conversations, I think a few of us at least are of learning more and understanding these barriers. But at least I'm feeling a little reticence around, is this now just going to come back and say, oh, yes, we do need another building? Because I don't know that that's something that's feasible for a council. I don't know what it'll look like next year, but when it comes back, if that's something feasible to actually move forward with. And I would really like to see this study come back and say, here's a range of scenarios, given what we've learned, to consider how we might make it work within councils' priorities and spending. So that's what I'm really hoping for, that it's not just come back and here's a building and $80 million. It's, yeah, the challenges we've understood, here's how we can work together to prioritize what we're seeing and then come up with some changes in a model that is really thoughtful about resources and that current council's priority. So that's where my gun and heart are.
And we've tried to incorporate that in the RFP, that we want something that's very attainable and speaks to council priorities and the library and is also, you know, making sure that it's it's reaching all and is is not pigeonholed for one solution. Yeah, and a phased approach that's very we we highly recommend, when we look at the other examples of other communities that have done really exceptional facility and operation master plans, they're very, you know, it's speaking about something as small as changes in marketing versus, you know, at the very other end of this spectrum of branch system. I mean, there are, these exist.
Yeah, and just one final comment and I'll hand it over. If I can remember what I was going to say.
You're doing that to make me feel better.
Yes, I am totally, we're in it together. I will hand it over to council member Wall and then the mayor, and then I will get back to you.
You say that you struggle finding benchmark data. You showed us a whole page of people who are like us in terms of population. Only one main library and one book. Why is it hard to find the benchmark data?
Well, when you also look at some of those, a lot of those in that list, circulation is half, a fourth of what ours is. I mean, we do have really high circulation for having, you know, one location and and one bookmobile. Our bookmobile actually circulates more than a lot of the other outlets throughout the state. I want to say it's, we looked at it just today, somewhere between 80 and 90, that's where it falls in the list. I want to say 83rd in the state. So there are 300-plus outlets in the state. So that would be a bookmobile or a physical, single location or a location that's part of a branch. Our bookmobile is at 80. So there are many libraries across the state that are circulating less than our bookmobile. So to me, that's that's staggering. And that's where I do find the challenge is, you know, we have, we have this really high collection use. You know, we may have fewer registered borrowers. So is it because we have so many super users? Is it, you know, these are some of the answers that we're hoping to get from this study.
I think that is a benchmark. That have greater use. Circulation. Collection. That is a benchmark, even if people are like it, even though all of every community's library function. I'd like to follow up on Mr. Palmer's wonderment about how do how do we get information from the community? In preparation with this meeting, a highly engaged member wrote me an email and said, this is why we go to the Stuartville Library. And then listed the reasons why they go to the Stuartville Library. How do we get that information? I thought this interview would be odd, hard to totally come by, get some. I thought this interview may be odd, hard to, and though we come by, get some notion of how we can improve this, that's all I agree.
Yeah, we do get that not scientific study anecdotal information and is that enough? I mean, a lot of the comments that we receive, you know, we're talking to our customers on a daily basis. So a lot of the feedback we get is, why is it so hard to get into your building? And how do I get out when it's time to leave? And parking. I mean, those right there are three challenges. And we more recently have had more folks who have, who have noted that it's more of a struggle to come downtown. I think that's why the book box was really, has, you know, did reach some folks and bookmobile continues to reach folks as well and lots of folks using digital, so.
Okay, so I'll push a little harder and say.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't notice either.
You probably even sent me an email that I could be turning that thing on.
Everybody's like.
So you, you have already taken either anecdotes or unscientific research and you've come up with some conclusions. Why would we need a $240,000 study to perhaps tell us exactly the same things?
I was really surprised in my picking Paul's brain. In 2015, I want to say it was a $160,000 study and things are not cheaper than they were in 2015. So I will contend that we haven't invested those smaller studies, the one that I was referring to before. That was a building program study. We spent about $20,000. So it was very, very small scope, not broad, not comprehensive, certainly not getting that amount and level of community engagement that we should have.
Yeah, I guess it, it would be hard for me to support that expensive study without really clear parameters. Oh, I just got a note from my wife that my microphone's not on. Oh, boy. I'm done.
Can I jump in since I, before I lose my thought and then mayor over to you? So I was going to say, you mentioned, we want to make sure that our strategies reach all, to reach all people. And I think this idea that we're going to understand where we need to focus energy and that might not be that we're reaching all. It might be that there are certain demographics or certain neighborhoods that we do need to focus on. And that's what I'm hoping some of this will show us and that some of that might be through non-traditional models like working with partner agencies to help deliver those services. So I'm hoping there's, there really is this openness to thinking creatively and using our resources really smartly.
Yeah, and I think that's noted in there as well. Our, our team as well also had that feedback.
Clearly, I read the RFP in every detail. Mayor Norton, go ahead.
Microphone on, lesson learned. A couple of things. One, we, we, mayor's office, with hopefully support from the council and others, are working on Rochester visioning 2050. We will be doing co-designing and outreach into the community throughout the summer. And there may be a way to partner on some of this and not recreate everything from scratch. So I'm just gonna, I'm not sure how we would do it, but I, you know, we have a consultant that we've hired, a lot less, which is a different kind of activity. But maybe there's a way to combine some of this work. So I'm just going to throw that out there because we will be using co-design. We will be focusing on underrepresented communities as well as, you know, the, the community at large. So I wanted to say that. You, you mentioned the, the scope of this is facilities and operations, both. So a couple of thoughts I had. And I want to be careful how I say this, but we offer as a city amenities, as council member Palmer mentioned, parks and many of the amenities within our parks, libraries, our civic center. Some of our activities cost and some of them do not. And the library is one that does not as our, our parks, but not all aspects of our parks, right? So I think we need to be careful when we start drawing analogies. Some of our, some things we can make money on and some things we can't. And the library is one we can't. So when you're thinking about increasing the use of your library, that will mean you will need more resources to offer the services that go along with more people. So, yeah, I'm just like throwing this out there. So you're not going to charge them for increasing the number. So it's almost a dilemma for you. We're going to work really hard to increase and there's no money, by the way, to do this. So.
And it's dependent on property tax.
Yes.
Tax levy.
Right. And so, yeah, so we will have to come up with funds to do that. So a couple of things I had a question about. Are you able to look at an RFP that is layered to some of the concerns about costs that we've heard that would layer? These are the things we have to have. Here are some things we'd like to have so that you could get something that could be broken down rather than having to start from scratch, depending on.
Do you mean the consulting services?
Yes.
Would be, or phased or?
Well, you often, and I've seen this in other contracts as well, you have a goal of what you want, but you also have a, a financial concern. And so how much can you get for this? And if you, if that's too much, can we get, still get what we need with a little less information? So I'm just wondering about phasing it all.
Maybe you could just clarify. We have already approved the budget, so that's not under discussion.
Didn't want to share that bad news. But yeah, that was approved in the 2024 budget that even split. And if you want to think of it this way, 120,000, because the rest is really library reserves and foundation support, which thankfully we have that foundation.
Okay, so trying to address the cost concern that was raised about, you know, I might have support, I might not be able to support this. And what you're saying is it's already done and so there won't be a vote for support.
It was approved for the 2024 budget.
Okay. So, so just was trying to ferret out how we could manage that. A couple of other things I wondered about when you talked about operations and that is, will you be able to ask for things like, what do like cities do for dealing with homelessness and issues that are occurring in the library with bathrooms? Are you able to find out from other cities what they've done to get more people enrolled? I mean, are you, is this what you're hoping to get?
Absolutely, absolutely. And I would love to, I can even share with you the example, RFPs that we found from the other communities that are fantastic, that do a lot of this, again, looking at it very holistically and broadly and getting, using that community engagement to come up with really actionable items.
Great. And I think, you know, as I said, I think we can help with that a little bit too. And then the last piece I had was with parking because I, I do understand why there, there's a small segment of folks who have a parking concern, but overall, you have a huge parking garage attached to the library that is almost never full, except on the weekends when we have events. So I'm, I'm a little curious as to how will you ferret out the parking needs in this? Is there, is there some way to do that?
Yeah, and we get, you know, we, we had so many wonderful comments in December when parking went from one hours to two hours free. For, I think there are a lot of folks, it's not a challenge. I will contend for our folks on much more limited income. It means their visit is different or doesn't exist. We intentionally changed our hours to be open more on the weekends. Oftentimes, we were competing when there are events, which is great. We want this thriving, lots of activity happening for our neighbors across the street, but sometimes that can be a challenge. So we tried really creative things. Kudos. We have the best team at the library. I'm very proud of just their creativity in offering events like Tuesday night glow night in February. That, that hit it for some community members. It was free parking. They could make it an event for their families. You know, usually when I'm leaving the building at 6:30 at night, it's quiet in the skyway when I'm leaving. And there were floods of people just coming in, super excited to dance with glow sticks. So, yeah.
Great. Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. Well, I just want to say, I think you already know how much I really appreciate our public library. I'll say it again. I think this portion of our city, the agency that you all care for and bring to the community is one of the most equitable and inclusive agencies we have in our city. So thank you again for all of the work that you always do. I'm glad this study is going to be done, but much like what Mayor Norton said, I'm wondering if perhaps we could incorporate maybe graduate students from the Humphrey School at U of M? If we could draw from a broader range, including partners and we have the professional agency, but maybe we get some graduate students on board as well to bring their expertise or their knowledge or help out to make the study even more robust. And then just finally, a shout out to my Ward Four as we won with 93% overall rating. And, and I, and I will go out on a limb to say, we are perhaps the most income compromised ward in the city. But I also believe that we may have the oldest demographic in Ward Four. So those are two statistics that may be pulled out to, to better figure out some of the benchmarking, additional benchmarking that can be done with understanding how people utilize the library, why they do that, that sort of thing. So, thank you.
Councilmember Bransford.
I remembered too. I'm thinking outside the box a little bit, occurred to me, I'm a little, I guess I'm a little confused about, is the proposal for this study to figure out who, who we're not serving and how to get a hold of them and get that information from them? Or is it, we'll have information to give to the consultant to figure out what we need? So I'm a little confused on that point. There's been a lot of like, well, we need community input. We don't have two thirds or not reaching two thirds of the community. So help me understand that a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, we have some of the data on where we can see we don't have as many users as, as other areas. So that is information we can provide the consultant in focusing on getting some of the information from those areas on why they don't use the library and what the barriers might be. And not just, I think it's important too, it's not just our, our users, it's also non-users. There are folks in communities and we see this in, in other studies and previous research. There are folks that can use the library every day and be frustrated about the cost of the library. And there are others who never use the library, but see the value in the library. So we want to get both users and non-users and get all of that information about what are the barriers and what are the challenges either to utilizing or to getting to the building or getting to the bookmobile or using the bookbox and being intentional about making sure that we have good representation within our, our research.
Okay. Well, so thank you for that. So I get that a little bit better. One, one thing that comes to mind is Rochester Public Schools touches almost every family in the city, right? You could learn a lot if you had someone come to a classroom and say, give them a little survey, hey, take this piece of paper back to your parents, what you like, what you don't like, and have them return it and give it to you. I, I mean, that, that touches a large population, part of the population in, in the city. So I don't know if you've talked to the Rochester Public School system about helping you reach out to like almost everybody. Now, there are also, I'm curious about possibilities, ABC, ABLE, rec, more of the disabled community, not disabled, whatever. Demographics that have, you know, either cognitive delays or physical limitations in being able to get in and use the library. Have you reached out to these organizations to sort of get a feeling for how usable the library is or not?
And we're hoping this is part of this study. And again, I think that's where we have experts that do this in other communities and have done this really well in other communities. You know, having, getting that objective view, not a, you know, giving me the feedback for my, my lens, but a very objective view of what those limitations and problems and challenges are. For the school district boundary, we do serve even outside of the boundaries as well. So we are cognizant that we do need some rural Olmsted County inputs from community members as well. So we aren't just limited to Rochester. We know that it is broader than that. We do receive some, you know, significant funding from Olmsted County. So that's been important to our planning team that we also get that input as well.
To sort of summarize then, part of, part of what this study will do is in part to figure out, we know who we're not reaching and strategizing and trying to think outside the box, how to get to those people. So that, that's part of why you need a consultant, because that's kind of a little bit more than the library can do on its own.
Yes, yes. And something, going back to surveying, and I know that this is us surveying and not a, you know, a professional surveying company, but we do tend to have very high return rates on our surveys. I want to say in the last survey that we did about our hours, that was the last big survey, community survey we did. I want to say we had 3,200 responses. We get a significant response rate. And again, that was users and non-users because, just, just because you don't use the library doesn't mean you shouldn't have a say in when it's open. Maybe you don't use it, but you want to make sure that it's open on a Sunday so that you can pop in and use the bathroom. We wanted that input. So we do really try really hard to reach our users with our, our surveys. But again, it is, it is nice to have a third party that is handling that side and, and getting that research done.
All right, councilmember Dennis.
All right, thank you. Well, I contribute my career in teaching and human services from growing up in a library. My, my parents had me and my siblings live there pretty much. So I am a big groupie. I, I do feel that when we, looking at revitalizing downtown, one of the biggest complaints I've heard, besides parking, parking is a huge complaint, accessible parking is a huge complaint, it is that there's nothing really free to do downtown because there's some events, you know, but everything, there's expensive food and families with kids. And when people are complaining about, you know, things to do downtown, they always stop and say, except for the library, because a library is a place we can just be. And it just warms my heart because I feel parks, library, there's very few places in, in our world where we can just be without expectations to spend money. So I, I want to just emphasize that is such a huge, I believe, asset, unmet need in our world is a place of belonging. And barriers like accessible parking is a huge issue for people to come downtown. So I do think that is something that needs to be really addressed. But when I, my question too about, well, first two questions, one about accessible parking, is part of this study going to be a sensitivity training kind of aspect? Where I've heard from library staff that you've had amazing sensitivity trainings where you have people come in and talk about people experiencing homelessness, how people tend to talk louder. So it's not to be threatening or hostile, it's because that's how they communicate is, you know, people are neurodivergent like myself, communicate, we talk loud. The sensitivity training was very beneficial for staff in the library. Is there going to be perhaps accessibility study where maybe people get in wheelchairs and see how long it takes to get to, how easy it is to park in the ramps to get to the library? So I, I feel that is one of the issues that a lot of people have brought. Is that going to be part of this, this study?
So training specifically is, is not part of the study, learning and, and having that information and presentations from a consultant to both library board and, and council and presenting information absolutely would be part of it. We do have staff engagement as part of this and there were a lot of things that, you know, feelings that our staff have or questions that they're hearing at the desk and wanting information. We do have, we try to do as much regular training as we can in a broad spectrum of, you know, whether it's working with individuals experiencing homelessness, whether it's, you know, working with folks speaking different languages or there, we try to do that learning and continue that, that learning for our teammates. But that is not something that is included in the RFP now.
Okay. And then the second, I'm looking at all of this, you know, circulation. I mean, I have my municipal ID. You can mark, you can, you know, how many people got their ID? You know, you can measure things, but a lot of things in the library, I think, are not measurable at all. You look at why people use the library free, and I wrote down a few things. I found a free Wi-Fi, tax help, computer access, job hunting, which if we support economic development, we want to support the library, right? Because we want to make sure that people have the ability to get jobs. You know, homework help, community events, I know story times and magicians and all the fun things that I know my kids have done. Streaming music for kids, youth who feel like they have no place to belong can go and partake in, in that kind of community. Audiobooks, just so many newspapers, archives, go on and on and on about all the things that, that are so important, compassionate human interaction. And so in our crisis today of epic loneliness, and you can look at it all from seniors, kids, everyone, epic loneliness, mental health, the, I've told stories before about people I know in Ward Six who have ended their life because of mental health. Mental health, the, I've told stories before about people I know in Ward Six who have ended their life because of mental health sadness. And I, you know, I don't know how we can measure the cost of saving, you know, of saving a life and of having, you know, real meaningful belonging. And so I guess that a question is, is that something that, I don't know, when you do these studies to to kind of dig deeper and say, yes, you know, we got, you know, X amount of municipal ideas, these and and circulations. But for those kids who who found that place of belonging, because I know you've done outreach with not from all walks of life, all expressions of sexuality and and upbringing and life and every, I mean, just all. People find belonging in the library, they find nowhere else, and potentially lifesaving belonging. Is that something that can be somehow put on paper to say, the library, I believe strongly with the essence of every ounce of my being, the library saves lives? Is that something that can be shown that not just meeting the unmet needs in our society? Not just fulfilling a true equity and lifting up people to to have economic, you know, include development, inclusion? But that this could be potentially one of the most important places in our city?
Yeah, we did have, there was a very long while before the pandemic where we were routinely doing surveys. I mean, I think probably every other thing that you went to with the library, we would do these surveys and we were trying to measure all of these outcomes because there are these, these amazing outcomes, whether it's, you know, learning something, whether it's getting connected, belonging, feeling welcome. Doing surveys all of the time is additional staff work and it's, it's not something, it's a challenge to keep up on doing that all of the time. And some of the things, you know, connection is really hard. It's really hard to, for folks to to quantify. We still ask the welcoming question. We want to see, we have a measure of our, you know, did you feel welcome today? That's on our comment card. We've been receiving those and and monitoring that for a very, very long time. And totally, when we first came back from the pandemic and and we're starting our Storytimes backup, we, you know, we all know that there are literacy rates that are are falling and that we have a lot to do to improve literacy. But what people were coming for, we found, were just the connection with other humans that they had missed for so long. So instead of having, you know, three books, it was like, okay, we've done two and these people are connecting. They're making these connections. Children are playing with one another, folks that might not ever interact anywhere else. I really think of libraries as the the great last place where people of all walks of life have that opportunity to interact, to be productive together, to learn from one another. It's really hard to find those places where you can, you know, bump into folks that are different from you and 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 learn from one another. And that's the beauty of of libraries. But it's really hard to put a measurement on that. So.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, Councilmember Palmer?
Thank you. I'm about to go back with the mayor kind of said, but I'd be happy if we had to increase the the tax levy to to help out because we have so many people come to the library. So I'm hoping this survey is successful and that we can come back with some suggestions. You know, I I'm looking forward to hear good news from it. And I'm glad what we've talked about today came out. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. I guess for me, one of the things that I'd like to know out of this study is how impactful Selco is. Whether, whether negatively, the circulation is up so high it might show that it's preventing from establishing a new branch? Or perhaps it's a benefit because we're reaching so many people? Just, I I think, I think digging into that Selco data versus how other libraries don't have that ability like we have. I'm hoping that would, that we'll be able to glean some useful information from that because I think it's a really important piece to what we do here with the library, what you all do with the library here.
Yeah, we definitely work really well with Selco. We are, we are a member of Selco. We are unique in that we have our own database because we do things just a little bit differently because we have such a giant collection. But we do support one another and we rely on Selco to promote library services throughout our region. So, yeah.
Thanks.
Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to try to summarize what Councilmember Dennis was asking. I think I've heard the statement, not everything that is measured is important and not everything that is important can be measured. And I think that's what we were shooting for there. Then we have to be careful when we do these comprehensive plans, so we do keep that in mind. As far as today, and again, I appreciate you coming here with your staff and trying to answer our questions and trying to get our input for it. Again, I'm asking my questions, but I I guess I want to make sure you know that I support what you're trying to do. I I I did watch through our budget and we were putting aside money for this. And it is an action based on our group board meeting a year ago. I I guess still to me, the library is an excellent resource to the city of Rochester. And I've watched as people look to say are they going to move here or not, that's one of the things they check on. What kind of library do you have? What what things? But so I want to make sure we we are, have a good, strong library and it's an important anchor for our community. As far as where it should be and how it should be and branches, I I don't have the knowledge for that. The the other thing, though, that when we start comparing back to nineteen ninety-five, I think, I hope it's not lost on this room, how much libraries have changed since nineteen ninety-five and what their mission is. And 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 I think Rochester has done a good job of trying to stay on the cutting edge of that. And not always, those don't always work, but I but I appreciate that we're trying to, trying to do that. As far as the comprehensive plan, again, I I think it is good. I've watched some different departments do this and we all do it at different levels and we all have different domains to do it with. I mean, I really appreciate the idea of bringing in expertise. But I also like that you're building a team. It's not just the library people, it's also city staff and it'll be other sort of people. Because that, the other voices in the room are are important. The thing that I didn't hear, and I want to kind of challenge the city staff that are going to be involved in this with, is what are the constraints on this? What keeps this from being a blue sky, which what I, what I wish I would have? And I I don't think it's valuable when you do a blue sky. I watched the fire department do this very well, trying to say, what are constraints, what are our opportunities and threats? So please make sure that this is not an unconstrained what we wish we had. Because I think that's just a hard conversation when it comes back. Thank you.
That's what I was trying to get at. And the word attainable is in there more than once, I believe. That was not lost on us. That needs to be attainable. Yeah. All right. Well, thank you so much, Karen. Great presentation and really excited. Time ahead. All right, well, we will move on to is it industrial or growth management, right? Allison?
Ms. Um. I feel like it got introduced, but Ryan Yatser and Aaron Luxstein will be presenting an update on where we're, where we're at with the growth management strategy for the city, some information about some constraints and some opportunities. And this does sort of dovetail with the next item about industrial land use. So maybe keeping a little bit of both of those in mind when you are hearing from Ryan and Aaron about growth management map update.
Are you two also presenting the industrial land?
Oh, yeah, we'll be doing industrial land. So just want to check with clerks. Am I doing something wrong to get the slides come up or? Maybe I need to pull them over.
Yeah, you gotta pull them up.
You can do it here, Ryan.
Ryan's used to doing this at midnight.
Oh, there we go. Just needed somebody else to do it. Okay. Good afternoon. Thank you for for having us. Ryan Yatser, I'm with Aaron Luxstein. And then we also have Elliot and Matt here who have done a ton of the legwork on this. So credit to them on a lot of what we're going to present to you. City council considerations for this growth management presentation. So it's just some things to keep in mind. We want to acknowledge how much has changed over the last five, six years since we've talked about growth management. The result of this, which I'll touch on at the end, will be incorporated into the comprehensive plan update. So we wanted to have that discussion first, but this is a key piece of it. The second thing is, is there an adequate amount of land, both in the near term and long term, to meet our goals? Obviously, housing goals becomes one of those top priorities. We want to make sure we've designated enough land to meet those things. And then determining future growth areas for residential, commercial and industrial land uses. We'll get into that a little bit more as we go. But the other thing that's maybe not expressly said on this slide that we need to keep in mind as we get, as Aaron comes up and presents topics is, are we looking at all of the areas that we should pursue? Are we considering the the correct areas? And you'll see what I mean by that when we get into the options. But now is the time to bring up other ideas i- if you have them, so that we can analyze all of those while also understanding that a lot of work goes into putting those ideas together. So we don't want to just throw everything at the wall. So first, just a reminder, I know everyone on this council has has dealt with this in the past, but a reminder of of what growth management is. When the comprehensive plan was adopted in two thousand eighteen, that was really the first time that the city put sort of policies in place referring to growth management. The comprehensive plan was adopted to set that foundation of all the other plans to build on top of. A library plan, for example, or the sanitary sewer master plan, the active transportation plan, all of those sorts of things. All those different, you know, functional plans or subarea plans, the small area plans, all sorts of things should take the comprehensive plan as the foundation of what to build off of. And growth management being a key piece of that. So what is growth management? It establishes areas where the city, where, areas where that will be affected by city growth in the future and tries to put some timing around when growth can reasonably be expected in those areas. As a reminder, the city sets an urban service area through the Homestead, through Homestead County. And that says where we reasonably believe we can serve with sewer in the next thirty to fifty years. We then take that thirty to fifty year timeframe and try to phase out when those areas can receive, can reasonably believe to receive city services through the growth management map. It's really important that all the entities, both across the city, as well as our partners like Rochester Public Schools and 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 folks like that, look at this map to understand where growth is occurring. We want to make sure that fire is investing in the same place as RPU, which is investing in the same place as parks and public works, et cetera. So we want to make sure that everybody is marching in the same direction. And and the growth management map is really our best tool to do that. And so that's why it's important. It's a, it's really the best tool we have to implement the comprehensive plan in a, in a manageable way. So a reminder, you were all a part of this decision in two thousand twenty-one. We brought, well, except for Councilman Walp, maybe, but we brought four options in front of city council. As a reminder, each of these maps looks slightly different. And this will be a theme throughout this presentation is the map that you will be looking at is what the map could look like should that option be chosen. So Aaron will walk through those in the few, in a few slides. But back then, we selected option one, West Zumbrow. And so that area circled there now has received city sewer. So to bring us back through the timeline of growth management, in two thousand eighteen, we adopted the comprehensive plan that really recognized growth management for the first time. While that was happening, the sanitary sewer master plan was going on but was not yet complete. So we knew as soon as that was done, we would have to come back to you for an updated growth management map. We did that in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. During that same time, you selected the next place for sewer to be extended to. That's in two thousand twenty-two with the West Zumbrow expansion. And now over the last year and change, that work has been completed. Now, there's a couple of projects that we need to do as a result of that selection, which Aaron will get into here in a couple of slides. So it's not done, done, but the question has started to come up of, okay, so now where? We went, we we selected West Zumbrow, but where should we go next? And that's really what we want to talk about today. So as a reminder, back when in two thousand twenty-one, when we updated the growth management map, we also put in some policies on how to amend the growth management map to build in a little flexibility. So since that time, we've had four growth management map amendments. These are the four of them. The first one in two thousand twenty-two is city initiated. And it was really to fill in a donut hole in the city. So that one's kind of a, should have an asterisk next to it. But the the other three, those were brought forward by development. And quite frankly, all three of those were on active developing general development plans. And so they probably should have been designated as near term at that time. So that's probably a lesson learned for us. And so really, no, no out of the blue amendments, which I think speaks to the effectiveness of the policy tool of a growth management. So since two thousand eighteen and really more recently, two thousand twenty-two, when we, or twenty-one, when we updated it, what have we learned? First and foremost, I think we've learned that more options are needed to better manage growth expectations. We've heard the questions of, I thought this was twenty fifty, how did it move to to near term so soon? And and it's complex because it depends on the project, it depends on how big the project is. Depends on is the project one house or is it an apartment building? You know, that has a major impact. Is it an apartment building or is it a, an industrial warehouse? That has a big impact. And so we we need to look at options to see if we can communicate this even better. And then we also want to look at the interim development policy. So interim development is a tool to allow development to happen outside of city limits but in the urban service area in a way that allows us to connect there in the future, even if we can't connect city sewer to there now. Leashes and Leads in Montgomery Meadows is the one that I think folks resonate the most with. That is an interim development. They don't have city sewer, they're developed in a way that sets up. So when we get there, that whole development can connect to city sewer. There is a ton of confusion around how that works and operates. We tried to clear it up and there's still, we can still do better. And so that's another, I think, lesson learned over the last handful of years. One of the proposed solutions is right now we have near term, essentially long term and beyond twenty fifty as really our three tools for designation. And and through this process, we will propose adding a near term capacity constrained designation. And I'll get into why here in a second. So this is, on the left hand side, this is the current map. And so this is, this is the base, what I'll refer to or Aaron will refer to as the base map. And every map from here on, you'll, you'll see is what the map would look like if you selected that option. So again, green is near term, yellow is long term, orange is beyond twenty fifty. With the state, under the the fear of confusing everyone, I will explain the pink area. That's, that is the large lot development or county subdivisions. So it's unlikely we will ever send city services through those pink areas. And and then the dark gray is is essentially the city's current city limits. On the right hand side is what the map could look like if we added a near term constraint. So one of the things we've run into quite frequently is we end up with a really small addition on the edge of town. And so we get into this debate of, well, it's a small project. Are you sure you can't extend sewer for ten houses or five houses? And well, the map says it's beyond twenty fifty. How do we do that? And so that's where we think this, this fourth category could be used. We're not married to where it's is on the map today. So we we certainly are going to refine that further. But I wanted to kind of use that to communicate of what that could look like, to try to help navigate that really small project that might better communicate to to the the residents of, well, you know, it is constrained. The reality is the sewer in that area is constrained, but it is possible that a very small project could fit in there. And so that's what we would use, that we we think that tool could be used to better communicate that. So just to recap, these are the four categories that we would propose on a final version of a map that we would bring back to you. And so one of, I suppose, one of the things we're looking for feedback is if, if this seems like a reasonable add to the map. The last slide here before I hand it off to Aaron for some city council considerations. As you, as you watch through these next options, there's a ton of permutations in how this could go. And this con, this conversation frankly can get rather confusing, but two things, and there are far more than two things, but two things to think about as we progress this is the regional sports complex. So that is sort of a big item that could direct pretty strongly which of these options we may want to select. There are a number of of sites that site is not selected. But that's something to keep in mind as we watch this. And then the Economic Vitality Fund. So that kind of, the Economic Vitality Fund really throws a wrench into some of this. And I'll let Aaron get into this a little further. But we budget so much money in sewer to do sewer extension projects. Well, the Economic Vitality Fund could in theory be used to open up lands for housing developments. And so it allows us to perhaps do more sewer projects than we would have otherwise, keeping in mind that we don't have the capacity to do everything at one time. So we still need to prioritize. The second thing here, the the importance of land use map designations, I want to take a second to talk about this. So I I've sort of alluded to it as I've been talking here. But it is really important when we look at the growth, that, when we look at the land use map and the growth management map, that we live by that land use map. Because we might be saying this is near term because it's low density residential. But if you, if if we quick flip it and say, well, they wanted a land use plan amendment, now it's medium density residential. Well, then it's maybe not near term anymore because we might not have sewer capacity for it. So it goes back to the importance of of living by these maps that we set. If we call it industrial and and we think that, okay, well, those users aren't heavy sewer users. And then all of a sudden we flip it to a mixed use, you know, urban style of development. Well, that's a totally different thing. And so I just want to remind folks of the ripple effect that those maps have when when we change them on a whim and how it impacts far more than just changing a color on the map. when, when we change them on a whim and how it impacts far more than just changing a color on the map. Yeah.
So what's staff's role in, in, in that? So like, for example, a, a project's coming through that's considered industrial and they go, eh, well, you know, we want to put in, you know, a huge monstrous apartment building. Does, so I guess what I'm asking is that doesn't all fall on the city council per se? Or do they have the right to put that in and that falls on us? With you guys saying, nah, we have to honor the application, but really shouldn't do this.
Right, they have the right to submit it. We will certainly try to, to say the concerns we have and that we wouldn't support it for all of these different reasons. But ultimately, they have the right to submit it to you folks. And so that's really what I'm trying to get across. And the map that we bring back for growth management as sort of looking for final approval will be built based off of the land use map. And so that's really my message is we can't, we got to let that sit still so that we can build a growth management map, otherwise it doesn't work. So with that, I will hand it off to Aaron to talk about the, the, the projects that I referred to that we still need to finish to wrap up the 2021 decision and then future options as well.
Thank you, Ryan. Aaron Lookstein, Deputy Public Works Director for Environmental Services. So as Ryan mentioned, we already started the West Sumbrow Sewer Extension Project. We actually completed that this past fall. So we did the extension. Now we need to come back and upsize the pipe back into, towards the wastewater treatment plant. From a budget standpoint, we budget $4 million just in upsizing and extension projects. If you look at it, we have three projects in the works that are planned a little over 8.5 million. So right now we're, we're planning to spread that over, over three years. To get that done, you will be seeing a, a project come forward in the near future that it is in engineering design right now. And that's that, the 2.2 million dollar project, the kind of the first phase of, of that extension. So if the projects come in under cost, or as Ryan said, additional funding becomes available, we can have some flexibility on when, when we do these projects, but that's the current schedule. So as Ryan mentioned, the, from feedback from council that we'd hope to accomplish today is really as we look at these five focus areas, are we looking at the right spots? Are there additional areas you would like to look into? Because the next steps, we'll, we'll get into the opportunities, the challenges, start talking with developers. We're investing a, quite a bit of time to then be able to bring back a recommendation on which of these areas we would recommend growing to next, both with extensions as well as pipe upsizing. So as I walk through the next five options, a couple of things to, to note, we tried to keep these consistent throughout, so similar language. So we'll look at first and foremost, developable acres. So that's bigger picture, how much by doing the first extension project is, can ultimately be developed? In some cases, you'll see there might be two phases. In other cases, we can serve all of it just with one, you know, or the first phase of the extension. So that'll be the difference between the first line of developable acres versus the target area. Target area is what can we serve right away as our first step? So let me know if that gets confusing. The next is the developer paid fee. So that's the trunk sewer rates that developers will, would be paying in. And the key part there is keeping that in comparison to down in the total box, the total cost per target area. So that's really the difference between what it would cost the city to first do this project and then what will we be getting back in developer paid trunk sewer rates to help cover that cost? So if you think about it from a banking standpoint, city is going to be the banker. What's the return on investment and how long we have to carry the debt essentially until that those funds are paid off? So those are some key differences as we talk through. So the first was the Northwest Territories. This is along Highway 52 on the north side of town largely south of 75th Street. 721 total developable acres that would be opened up and right away by doing these first projects, we could, all of that would be readily available for, for development. So it doesn't require additional projects. And when we get to Silver Creek, you'll see an example of where we have to do some phasing there. One thing to know with this one, it's all extension projects. No upsize pipes back to the wastewater treatment plant are needed. All new construction building out. However, one thing to note, it does require the construction of a new lift station, which is a, a large part of that expense. And then there's additional operation and maintenance costs that come along with operating a, a lift station. Total project cost is a little over 20 million dollars. And then the, the target cost per target acres is 29,000. So if you'll see developer paid fee versus our target, it's pretty close. So again, if development happens, that will get that return on investment. But it's a fairly sizable cost upfront for the city. I'm not going to go through all the opportunities and challenges. Again, these were kind of high level, just, we'll dig into these later when we bring back recommendations. But a couple of the opportunities, great access along Highway 52. It does allow for commercial and residential lands. Some of the challenges, again, 21 million upfront to cover that, that cost. And, but, and then there would be some, a lift station, at least one lift station associated with that. Next option is Silver Creek. You'll see this is, this was also brought forward in 2021. So it's on the, the east side of the city. This is an example, we talk about where it has the potential to open up 711 developable acre, acres. But the first phase would just open up 303. So if you look really closely, basically on the west side of that is now green, which would become near term. There's still a chunk of, of yellow, which means we would have to extend sewer in order to open up additional lands there. This one does, most of the flow for this actually comes down to downtown along Seventh Street Northeast and along the west side of, of Corey Hill. So there's a lot of upsize projects that, that would need to, to happen. About 11 million of the 16 million is just upsize lines back towards, towards the plant. Developer fee is, is fairly low at the 11,000. This is the cheapest developer fees that we have in the city at 11,000 per acre. Project cost for the target areas is 54,000 per target acres. Again, as we look at the opportunities and challenges, basically that means the city is going to be the banker. We're going to cover that cost for, for a long time before we get those return on investment back on that project. So some of the opportunities though, and you'll see in the next options, this does open up some bottlenecks on the southern sewer sheds in the city. A lot of the wastewater on what we call East Zumbrow, the south part of town flows through here. So any efforts that we do either in the Silver Creek or the Simpson Road that I talk about, anything in the East Zumbrow helps for future growth as we look at additional areas. Some of the challenges though is this is largely just residential. And then it's, it's difficult developable land. There's decor edge floodplain, some topography issues. So not all going to be developable acres as projects move forward. And again, the city would be the, the banker. And there's a longer return on investment there. Next is the Simpson Road. This will look very, very similar to 2021, which was Bear Creek. So we made a couple of adjustments to the boundaries there and changed the name to Simpson Road. Phase one would open up their potential for not, just under 1,000 developable acres. First target area is 744 for, so about 75% of those acres get opened up just with the, the first phase. And then we could do another project later if, if council desired. The developer fees are right about in the middle at 19,000 per acre. Several upsize projects needed. You'll see the first one is all of those 11 million that we would have to do for Silver Creek is part of this project too. Because again, all that wastewater flows through there. And then we would have additional upsizing as well. And then a couple of extensions to open it up. Total project cost just under 35 million. Again, these are estimated, you know, engineer estimates. And so then the target acres is just under 47,000. So again, opportunities opens up bottlenecks that are challenges for other parts of, of the city. You know, great access to Highway 52, 63 and I-90 on that side of town. That we know there has been some light industrial users that have, have shown interest as well as some residential. Some of the challenges, it is a $35 million a big capital improvement project cost. And again, not all of those lands are ideal for development. So you'll have some of that get removed just because of decor edge floodplain things, things like that. Next option is, is South Zumbrow. So as we move to the west side of town, here, there's a, a large part of this opens up additional opportunities so that a little over 2,000 developable acres, the first phase would open up 682. This is our largest trunk sewer rate. So just at, at 40, approximately 42,000 per acre. So a large trunk sewer rate fee that we're dealing with there. Upsized projects are needed. There are several downtown, approximately 19 million just in downtown projects. This actually flows through, through downtown on that side of it. And so approximately $30 million in total cost and just under 45,000 per, for target acre. But if you look at it, again, target acres and developer fees are pretty close. So again, realistically, if, if development happens out there, you get the return on investment sooner. But there's a, a big cost upfront. Southwest, there's been a desirable place for, for people to move to. So there's been, you know, positives there. The quicker return on investment based on the trunk sewer rate versus our, our cost. But it's a big investment, you know, upfront in terms of the challenges. And then the last option that we looked at was, was West Zumbrow Phase Two. So the first option, you know, the first phase, again, we've already talked about that. We completed it. Phase Two would open up an additional 2,700 approximately developable acres as, as we had west of, of Rochester. The first phase would open up 614 of that. Developer fees are, are still in that middle, but a little bit towards the, the lower end. Some of the upsize projects that we've already done for Phase One will benefit this. So there's only two upsize projects needed and then the extension project. So 15, 15.6 million in estimated cost at 25,000 cost per target acres. So some of the opportunities we build off of the progress already made for West Zumbrow, the Highway 14 interchange, you know, that the county is moving forward, will likely bring some economic development opportunities there that we can build off of. And then the other thing, if you remember, we had to go through an orderly annexation process to have those lands annexed as we move west. That's already in place so we can kind of continue to bring lands into the, the city on that side of it. So the one note, I, I guess I'll call out here for challenges. Additional street improvements would need to happen as we build that area out. So 19th, you know, is undersized. We'll have to up, up, do some street improvements there to manage some of the traffic impacts with additional growth. So with that, I'll let Ryan talk about next steps unless there's any urgent questions for me right now. Okay, thank you.
All right, so just real quick to wrap up here, some next steps. So the next thing, this is all under the umbrella of the comprehensive plan update. The next thing you'll hear Elliot speak to the industrial land inventory, which is a related conversation, though slightly different. Growth management analysis, this is sort of an all encompassing box. So to be clear, we're not looking for a selection to be made today. In fact, I don't know that we necessarily need to choose one as a front runner or anything of that nature. We're really trying to just get these on the table and see if we, if we're missing something more than anything else. But following this discussion, we will start having conversations both internally as well as with our partners to figure out which of these options sort of rises to the top. And then from there, it's important that, Aaron touched on it. Many of you will remember the, the West Sumbrow expansion. We had to talk to property owners and get an orderly annexation in place and all those sorts of things. So we want to make sure that if we're going to go somewhere, development's going to happen, right? And so as Aaron's flipping through those developer paid fees, it, it's all numbers to us. But, but that's a, some of those numbers are much bigger than others. And so making sure that if we go here, are you actually going to develop soon in that, in that price range? Otherwise, it's not, it's not worth us extending sewer at, at this time. So there's a lot of work to do in that growth management analysis box. I talked about the sales tax projects, both the regional sports and economic vitality. Those need to sort of be ironed out a bit further before we can make a, a full recommendation. And then we would likely be back in front of you with, with a, a follow-up study session on which option we would propose. To be clear, the options today were listed alphabetically, like intentionally. They are not listed in order of priority. And so we would come back with, with a bit more thought behind which option we, as a development team would propose. And then you would see a final approval through the update of the, of the comprehensive plan. So with that, we will stand for any questions.
Well, that helps a lot. So thank you for clarifying that. I had one question just about how, how is a partner like the school district involved in a process like this where they're also planning where, for where they have capacity with their schools?
Yeah, so last, I'll let Aaron chime in as well. But last time we did this, after this type of discussion, we then met with their facility spokes and showed them the options to get their feedback as well. And so we would propose to do something similar.
Wonderful, okay. Councilmember Bransford?
Yeah. I'm just curious if the rezone alignment between the zoning and the land use resonates a little bit better or is it with one, one option over another? Or is it, did you guys do a pretty good job of saying, hey, if we want to go in this direction, our land use is pretty much spot on for zoning and development? Or would you have to tweak that? Or, you know, is, is that in pretty good shape?
That's a good question. The land use and zoning conversations we've had recently have been in, inside city limits. Through the update of the comprehensive plan, we have the opportunity to look at land uses outside of city limits. And that ties in pretty well with the industrial land conversation next. So that is something we would look at through the update of the comprehensive plan. I'll tip my hand and say, I'm not anticipating large changes except for the industrial conversation for lands outside of city limits, but we would look at that through the process, yep.
All right, at first blush, I would say Phase Two. I mean, I know we're not making a choice, but right now along West Circle Drive, we have a lot of new businesses, a lot of housing, seems to be kind of a growing area. And we've already done Phase One. And there's a lot of developable acres. So at first blush for me and with the, with the land use and the zoning nearby, but not outside the city limits, really seems to be kind of a convergence of a lot of good things for me to see that.
Councilmember Wall?
Thank you. Quite apart from all that you have said, which I appreciate, I have been impressed in the past year with the city's ability to pivot when there are good projects that will benefit the city of Rochester. You showed the three amendments in 2023 and there's the 55th Street Northwest, 18th Avenue Northwest that I know that you worked on very hard. So I would presume that no matter what would we choose in the future, if, if reasonable requests come, we would still pivot to meet any needs?
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, they're maps, the, the maps are policy tools that you folks have adopted. And, and, and so can, can they be amended? They can be. It's certainly not something we would suggest. And, and part of the importance of sending a message to the market is to leave the map as is, to try to show like this, we're committed to this. If you're interested in developing, look at these maps and, and know that they mean something. That being said, yes, there's always the option at the end of the day that we can make amendments. We, we set, or you guys set the map and you guys can change the map, so.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick. That was close, thank you. You asked about our public school district. I'm wondering if you're also working with other public school districts. I know with our growth and we've been exporting a significant amount of students to other districts just because of where folks live out at the edges of our city limits. Are you coordinating it all with the other public school districts? I, I've heard that we're getting really close to Byron City Limits for the schools there.
Overlap in some of those areas.
Yeah, it's a good question and a good idea. We've not met with Byron School District, but it's something we certainly can. And yes, a portion of that West Sumbrow is covered by the Byron School District.
Well, I guess that, that gets my vote is to go to those other areas and check with their school districts and just see what, look, looking at that transportation stuff and, and enrollment stuff. Thank you.
Councilmember Keen?
Thanks, yeah. Guys, there's, there's a lot here. That really, I mean, I'm looking at this and going like, this, this is the, a lot of the, this is really coming from the update to the comprehensive plan, the five year thing, five years slash six. Couple of questions. How, right now our near term is before 2050. And then our long term is 2050 and beyond. That's been the same year for about eight years. Is that something that ever changes?
I'm trying to go back to the descriptions here.
Oh, it's not that important. It's just that, no, let me just end it. I don't even really need a response. I just don't know at what point do you say that 2050 changes? Or it always stays at 2050 because it becomes near term over the next 10 years, next 15 years?
Yeah, it's a good question, one that I don't know that I have a, a great answer for you at the moment. But at the time, or at this time, our focus is updating the comprehensive plan, not kicking it further downward.
Okay, all right, sounds, sounds good. I appreciate too that this is, we're coming out of the comprehensive plan. But I, I guess I have to ask, was any of this, like the near But I, I guess I have to ask, was any of this, like the near term done with an eye towards our housing problems? And this is a way of addressing some of our housing?
That too.
Yeah. So I've shown these maps before, but I would argue, um, over and over again, that the near term we have today can address our housing.
Okay.
Uh, can address the, a, a number of housing units that we need, um, right now. That being said, there is a benefit to having more near term than you need to create competition in the market. So, um, I think it can help with the housing discussion, but I will continue to say till I'm blue in the face that we have enough near term on, to address housing right now. We just need it to be built.
Okay. No, thank you. I appreciate that. As far as the boundaries, especially on the near term con, uh, constrained, are those just roughed in on a map? Or do they, are they on a property line boundary? Or are they like through an open field or?
Yes.
So, so there, I mean, are we causing ourselves trouble that we're going to cause, someone's going to come and say, well, half my property now is in and half isn't?
We already do have that, right?
I think we do, but I'm just checking to see if we'd used any boundaries.
Yeah. Um, we, yes, we, right now, we just essentially, for the purposes of this map today, we essentially used property lines. But we would intend to refine that more closely based on topography, which can, because that's really what drives where sewer happens. So sometimes it does put a line through people's property and that line shouldn't be exact because it can be blurred a little bit. Uh, I would, through engineering, but it shouldn't be just property boundaries because they could be in different sewer districts based on topography. So today it was just a concept.
All right. Well, as far as the, the, the main concept I thought that I saw today, as far as the, when you talk about the land use map is this new category of, um, near, near-term capacity constrained. And I, I think I want to support that as a, a good way to, um, enable the, the places to additional building where we have capacity. And I'm hoping where we have, uh, interested landowners who are ready or, or willing to do this stuff. So I want to do a vote of support for that. Um, as far as the other, looking at the other sewer capacity things, I, I want to make sure I understand that the, the ones we talked about in twenty twenty-one and those big investments, that stuff's done. And you're looking at what's our, what we're going to use our capacity for in the next two years? Is that, am I thinking about it correctly? I mean, you're, you're laying these five places out and I'm saying we can probably do one or maybe two. When you're lay, layer the five other, the five options?
So, um, not sure I fully understand your question, but I guess as, so as we look at this, um, one, we're looking at what we have capacity to manage to, for these projects. Even if we hire consultants and directors, their staff, you know.
Good point. I'm not worried about hiring. I'm just, you're not talking about if we wanted to do all five, you'd say, okay, I don't think that's possible.
Correct. No, it, from a, from a planning standpoint, it would be best to select one. Now, as Ryan said, with some additional funding sources, maybe there's a, a hybrid approach where we say, we're, we're going to invest here and we're going to use sewer enterprise funds, economic vitality, maybe we want to start addressing some of these other issues or, you know, vice versa. I think there's some options there based on what's going to happen.
Good.
Um, with the local option, sales tax funding and things like that. But, but it would be best to select one area and then, um, start working towards that. Cause keeping in mind that as we start designing pipe sizes and all that, we're really looking at long-term growth and making sure that we build those pipes to the size, uh, based on those long time, long-term growth projections. And again, we can do some phasing like West Sumbro. There are some risk with extending a pipe and then going back and upsizing. If we don't do those upsizes, we've now created problems. We have to commit. We can do that knowing that development doesn't happen overnight. But then once we start down that path, you know, we need to complete the rest of those upsizes. Otherwise we've created a bottleneck and, and can have major challenges.
So I appreciate you're trying to get input from this group. Councilmember Bransford talked about he'd look at one and, and like choose it based on one criteria. I was looking at the criteria and looking at the gap between our city costs and our developer fees and thinking that was a key driver. The one that I didn't have in there, and I guess I don't know if you guys have either, is you, you talk about the opportunity, the number of acres for development. But are there eager, I mean, could I know that this one is going to have activity by twenty twenty-six if we do it? Where the other ones might have activity by twenty thirty-five? Do we know things like that? Or can, should they come to bear on our decisions? I, I, I would, if I knew it, I think it would come to bear on my recommendations.
Yeah. I would say we could answer that anecdotally. I don't know that we have it, uh, for all options. If you look through the pros and cons on these, you'll see in some areas we've noted developer interest unknown and in other areas we've noted developer interest.
Okay.
That's just based on calls that we receive. Um, and so what I would say is once we've sort of talked internally, both in, in our, to our internal departments as well as our partners, and one starts rising to the top, we would start talking with property owners in that area because we don't want to change the map if there's no interest in development. So we would, we would hope to have a better answer to that when we bring a back a proposed map.
Okay. Well, I don't think it's any surprise to you guys, but when I go to events on Southwest Rochester, the, the property owners know exactly what we're looking at doing here and are very interested in it. So I think those are in areas where I think we would get, uh, a fast uptake on, on, uh, the near term, uh, the development cap, uh, opportunities in that new near-term zones. Thanks.
Councilmember Dennis?
All right. Thank you. So I echo the, the thoughts about the school district involvement and housing. I think those are incredibly important. I know my family chose our neighborhood because parks, schools. We want to make sure that there's good places where we live and we want to make sure that those, um, entities are involved. Uh, I also want to just say like the, um, complexity of this, uh, to project growth is kind of like the crystal ball that you're kind of looking in and, and looking at all the variables happening. So a couple of variables I was just wondering if were considered with, um, the anticipated huge growth of Mayo Clinic. The five billion dollars probably will bring many jobs, I anticipate. Like looking at what workforce is going to be coming in, uh, commuting, um, needs. I, I, I guess I don't even know exactly who all of the workforce is going to be and maybe preferences to bigger city living versus, you know, more closer to rural areas. Um, so maybe, maybe ask if that has been looked at or talked with Mayo about what they project with their, um, growing needs. And then also I, I've been really involved with looking at legislation in, in the, the Twin Cities. And there's all these neat ideas coming and going like the light rail and different idea, you know, things that might be. Has, has that been looked at? The, maybe some kind of big growth happened, some kind of legislation that might really push wanting people to live maybe closer, um, let's say to the Twin Cities versus, or closer to Iowa or, oh, with what legislation might be happening in those areas? I, that's a kind of vague question. I don't know if those are just.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll.
Things to look at.
Take a stab at both of those. So for the first one, for the job growth and population growth as a result of job growth, um, I think that points to my earlier comment about making sure that we need to designate enough land to handle the growth regardless of the type of growth. So that, that is something we're looking into and wanting to make sure that we at least have enough land, um, with services, both, you know, sewer water, but road infrastructure and et cetera, et cetera. So yeah, we're looking at that. Um, as for the legislative stuff, I'm not sure that that directly impacts this. Um, but it, you know, the, there is some, something to be said for which side of the city growth happens on. Does it happen on the north, northwest or directly north, I guess? And, and we did list that as an opportunity of the Northwest Territories, the fact that it is closer to Minneapolis and St. Paul. But I'm not sure that the legislative stuff that you're referring to directly impacts this.
Thank you.
Yeah. If I had one more thing and now the, the first comment, um, so one of the things we looked at it just even evaluating these options, knowing council's priorities for residential growth and housing. You know, we identified areas that realistically could support residential. And then there was the added things of can it also support commercial, industrial, some of the mixed use? So prior, you know, we looked at that in identifying just these five areas right up front. So.
Thank you. Well, thank you for your time today and look forward to the next update as you have more information.
Thank you.
We will take a ten-minute break and then invite Mr. Muller up.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
All right, welcome back, everyone. It's to have Elliot Mueller here to introduce our next item on industrial land use. Go ahead.
Thanks, President, Mayor, members of the council, Emily Mueller with Rochester Community Development. And I just have a really brief presentation to discuss about the state of the industrial land within the city and without, or and with along the edges of the city as well. So just some considerations that you as well as city teammates know that we've had a significant removal of industrial land within the city as well as along the edges. And so that wasn't, you know, due to any unnecessary need. We needed to translate a lot of that to housing so we can fix that housing deficit deficit that we're still seeing within the city. So throughout the presentation, I really just want you all to keep in mind that we're just seeking feedback on a short term action as well as some longer term actions that we have towards the end of this presentation for you to review. And so I like to start out a lot of my presentations with a quick crash course on the difference between land use and zoning. Land use is the policy or the guiding principle of that land and how we want to manage it and the resources on it. And zoning is that regulatory mechanism that we can set the rules on how we develop on that land. So regulations can include location, hours of operation, as well as the density of that development. Again, as Ryan had mentioned, this is under the umbrella of the comprehensive plan update. And so within our comprehensive plan, we designate industrial development as those economic activities that deal with manufacturing, fabrication, assembly, storage, and distribution of products. And then the biggest caveat is that they have some external impact due to heavy truck traffic, lights, or noises. And so that's why on the screen you'll see that we most often want those uses to be located away from low density residential on larger parcels, near direct access to higher order streets, rail or air transportation. And also want to make sure that there's adequate municipal, excuse me, municipal utilities nearby to service them. And so when we move into the regulatory part of it, with the unified development code, we call out three main districts, business park, light industrial, and special industrial. And you can see that I put them up there in accordance to intensity. So the business park would be least, and that'd be more or less your business park or office building up all the way up to our most intense, which is special industrial, which would be your smelters, your junkyards, things like that. And so when we're talking about intensity with land use, we're talking about how is the land being used, to what extent, how dense? And are there any external impacts happening due to those uses on the site or around the site? So next on your screen, you'll see the spatial distribution of the industrial land throughout the city. In 2024, we have approximately 5,505 acres with a majority of that being in light industrial or 4,631 acres. And then that added with the business park is the special industrial. That's about 15% of the city's total land. Now, on the right, you will see that I have included without the airport because on the south, you can see that is about 2,000 acres. And that's just the airport. And a lot of those parcels are specifically just for the airport, so not necessarily developable. Around them, outside city limits, there's potential, but for the purposes of this, you'll see that brings it down to about 3,421 acres. And then that's about 9% when you do the math. So with that math that you had just seen, of those parcels that are zoned industrial land, we have approximately 178 acres that are vacant. And so the two things that I would note about that mainly they're light industrial, so that's kind of like warehousing, storage, but not, you know, not super light and not super heavy. And the second thing would be that they're small with the average being 6.9 acres. So that's an average. So there's some that are smaller, some that are larger. And at first glance, 6.9 acres might not seem small, but when you account for other requirements for development, roads, also the size of this building and any potential environmental features that need to be protected. You know, that really does decrease the amount of developable land. And I will also say that when we met with our partner organizations such as Ready, we really are hearing that they're wanting, their users are wanting something more along the lines of 20 to 40 acres for operational sites. And so, you know, within our city limits, that's not what we have. So where would we logically look next? That would be outside the city limits. So with the comprehensive plan, we designated approximately 351 acres of future land outside city limits. And you can see that it's circled in red right there. On the north, you have, I think that's Broadway North and 48th Street Northeast. And that's already kind of being used in some capacity for industrial land just in the township. And then on the west, you have along Highway 14. So there's two things that I'll say for the Highway 14 site. You did see that it's part of one of the options that you can choose for the growth management map in the future. Right now, that's designated as long term, so it's not ready to be annexed, it's not ready to be served. So we would have a couple of steps to do to make sure that we can develop some industrial style buildings on the property. Also, on the west, you have Montgomery Meadows, which is a residential subdivision, so that kind of cuts it off right there, as well as the Highway 14 interchange project that will be coming in soon. So I have some other statistics right there. Mainly they have to do with the two previous slides that you had before you. The zoning map amendment, the citywide one that we had done in 2023, included about a net loss of 153 acres. Again, that wasn't the intent necessarily. The intent was to better match our zoning to our land use, which we did, and we did accomplish that. But due to that, a lot of that industrial land or light industrial was turned into mixed use. So heavier commercial, but also still allowing for housing. And one other caveat would be the Rochester Technology Campus site, which was the largest of our special industrial land continuous area was removed because it wasn't the land use underlying it was not industrial. It was commercial or mixed use supportive. So with those previous slides, I just have a couple of takeaways here. Many low density industrial activities can also be located within an MXG zoning district, heavy commercial, but it also allows housing. But that being said, those industrial uses aren't necessarily allowed by right or approved by right because there is a housing component that can happen in MXG. And we want to make sure that we are balancing that and not putting, you know, heavy industrial right next to an apartment complex. So that's, you know, part of the part of the caveat there. And then the last thing would be, and probably the most important, is that there's very few existing and future locations for larger scale industrial activities to be located inside the city and as well as outside the city. And so I'll stop right there and let you ask her answer, or excuse me, ask any questions I might be able to answer before we get into any of the short term and long term action items that we have for you to give feedback on.
Any clarifying questions? Mayor Norton?
This is an area I know a lot about, so if this is a silly question, I'm just, just tell me. You said there isn't, there aren't many existing and future locations inside and outside of Rochester. And yet we are not a landlocked community. We have nothing but lands surrounding us unlike other communities, which to me seems like an advantage for our growth. And so I'm, I'm, I'm not understanding why that land cannot be used, even if it's outside our city for industrial, for light industrial or low intensity industrial. And so if you could help me understand.
Yeah, thanks for the question. So I would say we do have that land called out in the comprehensive plan. So on long Highway 14 West and also in the north there, you know, one, they're already being used somewhat. And so the users that, you know, maybe coming to court the city or come to look for development sites, you know, might not be able to purchase those properties. Also, you know, part of the comprehensive plan update is we want to look for additional sites outside the city limits that aren't currently designated as industrial land use. And so we would look to add more to then bypass any additional like land use plan amendments or growth management map amendments to basically make these sites almost shovel ready.
So can I clarify? So it's not that there's not land, it's just currently being used in a different way with a different, some sort of different designation.
Yes, I would agree.
Okay, so it's not that in the future someone couldn't decide to sell the land. And I think of that, I'm not sure where it is on this, but you know, the IBM plant, which is underutilized right now. I don't know where that fits within what we're talking about here in industrial zoning. And there's farmland right there, kind of in the middle of the city. Is that, how do we talk about that in this discussion?
Yeah, and I think that's a great question. I think that's what the comprehensive plan is for, is really trying to find those lands that are suitable for it. And I think that's the main question. I mean, there is a bunch of land outside the city limits that we don't have a land use for. Right now, it's urban reserve meant to be designated upon, you know, annexation or any future growth. So I think that really the point is where are those lands and can we find more? So I hope that answers your question.
Okay, Councilmember Keane?
Yes, thank you for being here. And I appreciate you starting with that land use and zoning because as much as I look at it, I don't apply it like you guys do, so it's not, it's not internalized to me. I don't, I don't think I fully understand it the way I need to, but I'm trying. I think the one thing that I want to make sure, again, we talked about this, is that we're, we're talking about it as city planners, as we should be. But there's a whole economics underneath this too, that generally speaking, industrial land is worth less than suburban or these other kinds of things. So I, 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 that definitely comes into my mind when we talk about like, what should they be? As if we're the puppeteer here moving these things around. But I think there are some opportunities. One thing that, that I was trying to think of though, these places that are outside city limits, do we have any examples where we extend city services, call that RPU or sewer outside of the city and allow basically them to get our city services without being in the city limits?
Oh, yeah, I would say I think we've done it with water before, but not municipal sanitary sewer. If they want that, then we would have to annex the property.
Well, I would think that'd be a pretty big thing for some of these, oh, sorry.
I could throw it over to my public works, Prince?
Yeah, I can chime in really quickly. So we do have a couple situations where we have connections agreements with lands outside of city limits that they are on city sewer. There's a permanent place that, and then we bill them for that. So, but that's a, yeah, so the two examples, there's two mobile home parks on the north side of Rochester, just outside of city limits. And then Chester Heights, I always forget the name of it, over, over on the east side of town also is connected to city sewer and pay for those services per that agreement.
And I would just maybe add to that, the challenge there is that anything in between that, that's also not in the city limits is likely to connect to that. And so you have additional development happening, not within where your tax, your taxing authority exists. And then often folks start wanting other services like public safety services in those same areas.
Okay.
So it starts to kind of become a hopover.
Yeah, I mean, I think what I'm being, if I could play back what you're telling me, it's not a good plan to start extending service. I mean, I'm trying to think of if we had these industrial needs and we, we don't have them in the city, could, could we support them outside? And I think it does require city services. And I think what I'm hearing here is it's not a good way to refill these requirements by extending services to them without bringing them into your, into your municipality.
It becomes challenging with special assessments and other things of that nature for the other things that end up between the city limits and that service area.
And my, my other comment is just, I have watched this, the industrial lands reduced by things like housing requirements, things like that, other people. But most of it is usually driven by the economics of it as, as opposed to not enough demand for the industrial, industrial properties. I'm going to step one past the, your next chart heads, and you're talking about the, the land use and zoning. And yeah, that, shoot, I went off of it. It's the one where it's showing the Seneca property.
Oh, yep.
And I just, I understand the Seneca property, and I think potential, that's a potential industrial use. I'm interested in the fact that there's an industrial use there just south of 50th, is that 55th Street? But I believe that's all Olmsted County. That's really not industrial, commercial land.
I mean, we still have to give it a land use, so industrial in nature, I mean, they have their truck facilities and salt and all that that they keep there. So I mean, it would fit in the definition, I would say, so.
All right. And I'm still thinking from the Ready perspective of what kind of opportunities do we have for people to come in? And again, and just that, that one again is a really hard access. And maybe that's a common thing with industrial land?
Well, ideally we'd want it to, you know, have ready access to higher order streets. So I mean, 48th, then the 63, and then 52 potentially. So.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Senator Dennis, did you have something? Okay, Councilmember Palmer?
I'm going to go off of what Mr. Keane just kind of said. In the county east campus, is that on your map as industrial? Or do we know what they're going to do? Can, can somebody, what's your plan there?
Yeah, so we ended up re-zoning it, I think, last year per the county's request to make it industrial because they wanted to expand their operations. And so that was in an area that we found that wasn't congruent with the land use. So it did get changed to industrial, and they're continuing to expand facilities on that site. I mean, really, it's owned by the county, so I don't, I don't want to speak for the city, but we don't really have any plans for county land.
So they, they could market it if they wanted to and sell the parcel. That's up to them. So south of 14, the new overpass that's going to go in there, there's a lot of property there. Is it, are we planning on, your map, I think, shows to the north?
Correct.
Why not go to the south?
Well, that's a great question. I think that's part of the reason why we want to bring this to you guys right now tonight so that we can, you know, figure out if that is future land that would be suitable for industrial development. But right now, this is what it's, what's been on it since 2018.
My last question is, is when I was in Winona, we had factories and houses and I didn't need a car. You could walk to work. It was great, wonderful. I think we're trying to go back to that. I think zoning had this idea that we put you out in the middle of nowhere, so you have to buy a car and go out there, which I don't think was a smart idea. Why do you not want residential and industrial close to each other or walkable?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the thought would be you don't want heavy industrial next to residential. You don't want somebody living where somebody by right can put a smelter or heavy pollutants, activities, things like that.
Well, we've got Cremlow in town, and they're pretty close. We had Libby's here, and they were pretty close to, to residential. And I would consider that to be, I think Stoffer Chemical on 7th Street is pretty close to residential that you could work through and walk. And so I agree with you, but, but if I'm buying a house and I know, you know, like in Winona, RTP is there, Peerless Chain is there. There's a bunch of businesses that are next door. I mean, don't buy the house if I don't want to live. But if I want to work there and walk, I, I guess I'm missing that from a zoning perspective. I know in Technology Park, we had some argument that, oh geez, we're taking away some land. But that makes sense to be able to walk to work.
So if I can jump in here, Councilmember Palmer, what I would say is if the goal is to create businesses near where people work, we have better zoning districts to do that than, than an industrial zoning district. So as Elliot was talking about, MXG can do exactly what you're talking about and protect us from the negative thing that could go there. So I think sometimes we think of industrial as all things commercial, and it's not. We have, Cremlow can like, could likely locate in a different zoning district other than a heavy industrial zoning district. So we have other tools to get at what you're asking about.
I, I guess I wouldn't use the word negative. I would use, you know, maybe not compatible would be, would be a better term.
Right. In general, we don't think of heavy industrials being compatible with residential. And that, going back to the tech park apartments, that was our concern at that time, was that is heavy industrial next to residential.
But Cremlow on 3rd Avenue, 4th Avenue Northwest, right across the street, a bunch of houses, they sell quickly, people like it, it's, it doesn't seem to bother.
And those aren't zoned heavy industrial, I don't believe. I think that that's one of the less intense ones.
Really?
I would have to double check, but that, I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wall?
Thank you. It's not a new notion that Rochester would like to diversify. And you referenced Ready's conversations perhaps with some other firms that are looking for, boy, 20 to 40 acres. Sounds like a lot to me, but do we have a cache of, of businesses that are very interested in moving to Rochester? If they can find that kind of, of land?
Well, the conversations that Ready's had with their potential users, as well as any anecdotal calls that we have received. So that's all we have to go off of.
If I could, if I could, I think it would be helpful if Elliot runs through like his last two or three slides and then comes back to your questions because I think his next couple of slides will get at this.
I didn't anticipate so many questions in between the two. So, yeah, so going off of this, the Seneca property that Councilmember Keane had brought up on this slide is approximately 130 acres in size. And so, you know, community development and the development services teammates really think that this meets the definition of what we put in the comprehensive plan of what industrial land, really where it should be located. And, you know, based on the size, ease of access to higher order streets, things like that. We have been in discussions or we've talked with people that have been interested in this particular parcel specifically for some type of industrial activity. And it's, you know, it fits those needs of 20 to 40 acres, and it can suit multiple of those users. The issue is that it's right now currently urban reserve. It does not have a land use. So we'd have to do some type of land use plan amendment, but because it's greater than 10 acres, the city would be the initiator on that end. And so that's a thought that we bring to you as a action in the near term to look at. And then it would have to be annexed into the city to be served. This area, if you recall from the previous presentations, right now is beyond 2050. But if we were to add the option such as the near term constraint, then we could potentially entertain that annexation because industrial users tend to be less intensive on sanitary sewer uses. So. And then I can go to my last slide.
Zoms had a comment.
I did just want to point out that it got stated that it's hard to develop at the airport. There's a significant amount of land at the airport that is outside of the air service area. And there is currently development at the airport, probably at least 10 properties that are outside. at least 10 properties that are outside of the air, air service area. And there is additional land that could be developed that just has certain requirements. But it is probably conducive to some of this conversation because the one story is a key component for certain areas within the airport master plan. So there is land, it could be developed, it's a unique kind of development, requires land leases. But for some users, that would be very attractive. So I just want to point that out.
Yep, and I would believe that the airport is actively looking for users. And so when we move into the longer term solutions or remedies for the situation, again, collaborating with partner organizations like Ready to find those suitable lands. But then also focus on the retention of the existing land that we have within the city and keep that as industrial land for any future uses associated with that style of development. And then lastly, again, this is under the umbrella of the comprehensive plan. So this is one of the items that we've had, have asked consultants to look at. And the RFP is to find more suitable lands within the urban service area. And so then we would hopefully, by the time we go to update the comprehensive plan, have updates for this as well as the growth management map. And I'll ask, answer any final question.
Sure, I think Councilmember Kirkpatrick had a question or comment.
Thank you. Looking at, could you bring up one of your maps again? And I'm, I apologize, I forgot backup. I neglected to look at the slide number. I think it's this one, so slide eight. I think back to when Lob Field was here, just, you know, a couple of decades ago and the city expanding so quickly, so far, and all those little purple areas that are potentially future industrial land use. I guess it would be my preference to, to get industrial land use out of the city, especially if it's that type of land use where there's potential for, you know, higher use of chemicals, that kind of thing. So with that bouncing off of what City Administrator Zelm said, pushing some of those south where the airport already has that, that type of site, no one, no one wants to live closer to an airport with the, with the noise. And that's where we've got a lot of space. That would, that would be my preference. My question around that would be, is, is there an area of the city that we would not want to put that heavier industrial, perhaps with the chemical burden or, you know, potential groundwater contamination? Where we would not want to place those things?
Yeah, I think based on the comprehensive plan, we would probably not want to put it towards those areas where we are expecting future growth in low density residential, especially specifically in those currently designated near term areas.
Okay, so bouncing off of what Councilmember Keen suggested and what Allison Zelm clarified, that kind of annexing or that, that special use piece of sharing. There's a lot of industrial places east of Rochester along the Highway 14 corridor. Could that be an area where we'd expand? It's not really designated for us to move to that area, but could we easily influence or compel folks to go to that area where we've got easy access to highway, but we're really not planning any development out there? Is, is that a potential area for something like that or not?
Yeah, I mean, I would say that that's part of the beauty of the comprehensive plan is that it is a guiding policy that allows you folks to make decisions. We obviously will gladly bring our recommendations. As for the market side of things, I'm not too sure on that end. But again, if those areas are suitable for this type of development, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to at least review them.
Thank you.
Any final discussion? All right, thank you, Mr. Muller. We'll look forward to seeing you again soon. And I will welcome Mark Parks' team up to talk about aquatics planning, which I know we're all excited to hear what you come back with.
So this will be a team effort with Deputy Administrator Parrish, Mr. Nickber, Mr. Widman and myself. I did just want to, as they're getting started, this is one of those rare times where maybe not the order of the options, but the options are provided maybe in a very specific context. Obviously, they're all fairly different, but that first option is the one that we thought maybe would be the most palatable from a cost perspective and making sure that you continue to move forward with what the community was expecting from those referendum dollars. The second option, we know is not incredibly palatable, but we wanted to provide you context for the magnitude of things that would likely not be moving forward if we were looking at fully funding this from park referendum dollars. And then the third option is maybe a little bit of dream space where you would still have that $1.8 million from the downtown 2012 sales tax available. However, again, those are just, just for some context, as we're going through this, we did hear that you wanted to add a pool, but we wanted to provide you the context about financing so that you could have some discussion about preferences and also inform any consensus that hopefully we will get today. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Parrish.
Mike forgot to wear his vest.
Well, we'll have a significant.
And plan.
Tomorrow, about that.
Yes, with the plan, okay.
President, members of council, great to be here this evening and appreciate your interest in, in the pool. Certainly, I think, good to start getting alignment around this topic. And here tonight, really the core question for you is just to indicate what financing option you prefer. As you know, you all approved the master plan previously for this with sort of some conditions that we come back and get you additional information and now the team continues to work on this. And so just the result of a good community effort, lots of feedback from the park board and council on that. Should you decide to advance an aquatics solution here tonight and develop a financing recommendation, which, you know, would require some subsequent approval, we'd anticipate from a process perspective that this would go back to the park board for their review and finalization of a design, come forward back to you for a recommendation where you would then authorize the bids and then, you know, ultimately approve those. By that, you'll have had some community engagement and feedback opportunities, revisions to the budget if necessary. Although I think we are coming to this conversation tonight with a target budget in mind, you know, based on the previous conversations to do this. And then we also have an estimated timeframe here that, you know, if all the moons and the planets align, that we would have fall bidding on this project and continue to advance in that space. So options, and as Allison said, these are sort of, I think, in order of staff recommendation. And certainly there could be any number of different, you know, modifications or permutations to these. But I think this represents sort of a good range of options for you to consider. So first, as, as you know, or many know, we had previously allocated at your January meeting, $1.8 million of city 2012 sales tax for the North Broadway Park and Ride. Very fortunate, the transit team worked on and received additional funding that will then reduce our local obligation there. We still have to finalize that. So, I mean, these are all contingent, of course. I mean, we still are working on a grant agreement that we brought back forward to you. But we feel fairly good about that. And that's $1.8 million that you could invest in the Silver Lake Pool as enhanced. The other would be to do an internal loan. And we don't talk a lot about these because we don't do it a lot, but we do have a handful of internal loans that we've done in the past. This is in essence borrowing from one fund to something else and then you repay it over time. It might be where we have some, you know, flexibility. We've done this with like our health insurance fund or there's a handful of others. But we evaluate the risk with that, like, do we have, you know, the ability to do that and so on? But generally with this amount of funding request, we feel good about the fact that we could find a fund to do the loan. We do charge interest on the loan. We try to treat it as like a business transaction. These numbers that we run with the terms that we've talked about really reflect about 4%. The reason why in this case we might think more about an internal loan is because it costs a lot for us to go out and borrow money in the market. There's a handful of costs there. One is there's issuance costs. We have to work with the market to package the sale. This is kind of a small amount for the investment community to want to think about. Then Aaron and Brian have to get their suits on and talk to the rating call people. And it's like more of a, more of a process when we borrow at these lower levels. So we would just suggest an interfund loan is not a bad idea. Funded by a half percent increase in the levy in '25 is about what it would take to service the, the debt service on that loan. So I think, you know, good viable idea here, this would get you $5 million to invest in the pool and really think it, you know, oper, you know, advances this particular project. Repayment term would be about eight years.
And pool and bathhouse.
Yeah, pool and bathhouse, correct. You know, again, lots to be left to design and operations, and there's an operation slide later here as well. So moving on, this other option, still invest the $1.8 million we talked about. And then says, you know what? Let's not advance some of our previously approved park improvements, mostly through the accelerated investment or the park levy annually of the $2 million that we allocated. So we allocate about a million of that to park levy, repaying the accelerated investment debt, which was the $15 million project that we advanced. And then we use about a million dollars for ongoing pay as you go expenses there. This would delay a variety of those expenses and put it toward the pool. Not going to go through each one of these. I imagine if you elected this option, there'd be a fair amount of torches and pitchforks here that like people would want to give you a lot of feedback about not doing these things. So just being, being straight about it. We think this would be a challenging, a challenging one for you to think about. But it gives you a sense of the, what doesn't happen if you just, if you want to reprioritize. Lastly, we could do debt or we could do just a straight interfund loan for the full $5 million. If you wanted to stay at that 0.5% levy increase level, you're then pushing yourself out to 13 to 14 years, quite a bit longer. You know, it's probably not as desirable that way. The other upside of that first option is you can then take that 0.5% levy increase and maybe then push that into O and M and facility reinvestment. Because as you all know, we get into these situations, we do a great pool and then we need to reinvest in them over time. Well, we could do this for seven or eight years, take the 0.5% and say, now we need to replace the thing, whatever the thing is. And then you, you know, have something that's more sustainable than sort of having to compete it through the normal process. You've sort of identified a stream of funding for future facility reinvestment as you move forward. This pushes that way out. You're going to need repairs to the pools and other things well beyond 13 to 14 years. So seven, eight years is a nice little sweet spot. The new is still new. But by then, you're going to need repairs and then you've kind of enhanced your strategy that way. So with that, I think that represents sort of the three options financing wise. I'm going to flip it over to the Parks team briefly here to just run through the last two slides and then we're all happy to stand for questions.
Thank you, thank you, Council President and Councilmembers. I think I have the easy part here because this reflects the additional $5 million to land the pool as part of our planning. It doesn't change the story of the other amenities that, that are planned. I do want to point out, you, you have heard from the city park community and the advocates, they were, they've been here at, at our meetings. They've been at our park board meetings and, and had meetings with Mike and I. They're not going to show up with pitchforks and torches, but they, they do have a keen interest in this. And I just wanted to point out, we have talked to them about grant funding that is available. We are confident that we, we will get some level of funding from those grants for, for the skate park. Now, that's, no grants are ever guaranteed, but there's pretty good indication that there will be funding available. I just remind you, we were in a very similar position when we started the planning for Soldiers Field Park. And you've seen how it's flourished since that time. So want to move on just to some points about operational funding. We're not asking for additional funding at this time, other than $100,000 to, that we've discussed already for Operation The Pool this year. We will be making requests, could be even for the '25 budget, but definitely will be, will be doing our planning for '26, the '26 budget. We came up with some rough estimates. We are, we, of course, we're going to gain efficiencies. Anything is going to be better than the current pool that we have now as far as efficiency and operation and our staff time dedicated to that pool. We estimate over $80,000 annually for direct expenses related to the, the changes. With that, anything you wanted to add to as far as operations, Mike?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Team. We'll turn it over to my colleagues, Councilmember Bransford.
Pretty short. I think I've said pretty much everything I need to say in any, probably anything you probably want to hear. But I like option one. I think option one works. I'm really pleased that we got all three. Thank you for the presentation. So for me, I like option one. That's what I think we should run with.
Councilmember Palmer?
Thank you for being flexible and coming back with us. And obviously I'm, I'm in favor of option number one. I do like eight years. I also like the fact that you're going to have money, not just for pools, but for other maintenance items after this is paid off. And I appreciate that. So option one to me is the best for the citizens of Rochester. Thanks.
All right, Councilmember Wall?
I also am in favor of option one with a caveat. In conversation, it had been suggested that perhaps we could take $500,000 out of contingency for two years in a row, eliminating a million dollars of that. That reduces it by maybe a couple of years in terms of the repaying with 5% levy.
Yeah, Mayor, President, I guess Mayor's gone, President members of the council. I think you certainly could do that. However, what I would suggest is you maybe, you know, allow for option one. And then you make a decision at the end of each year to say, we could allocate this amount of contingency. Or even when you get your audit back, you say, we did well here. It was a good year. We didn't have any major things come up. And we could allocate that contingency at the end of the year. So just sort of make a prepayment on, on the loan and you could still get to the same point. I would just say, not to get too weedy about it, but we often, we have the contingency, but we also like to maintain our reserve level at that 42% reserve level. And of course, every year the budget goes up, the, the need to increase the amount of funding allocated to the 42% growth goes up. So sometimes we use a little bit of that as buffer to not have to budget for the increase of the fund, the fund balance reserve to keep at that 42%. We're over that right now, so we have some margin. But historically, that's been an important thing, that contingency helps us not to have to budget for keeping us at that 42%, if that makes sense.
I do like the explanation of being able to buy down the loan if things have gone well for us. Thank you.
Since I'm maybe a little more risk averse, I, it makes me nervous to plan to use contingency at that level when we really are needing contingency for issues that come up throughout the year that we're not anticipating. So appreciate that additional way of thinking about it. Councilmember Kirkpatrick, and then I have another comment.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone suggesting option one because I know who will be coming after me with feedback, including pitchforks and torches if we go with option two. So I'm not going to pick that one. I perhaps need to review this again, but I was leaning towards option three because I felt that there was more, more room for maintenance and services ongoing, a kind of a, a full spectrum plan that would include those things that we've been lacking so often for upkeep. And perhaps I misunderstood.
You know, I, I think really what option three gives you is the opportunity to prioritize the 1.8 million in a different way, whether that's to some other council priority, whether it is to, you know, other reinvestment and maintenance activities. That's one time funding. And if you go with that, you're on a longer trajectory. Whereas with option one, you take that funding you're allocating from the 0.5% levy increase in the $400,000 to $500,000 year range, and then you get that infused into the system to get to maintenance faster. So it, it's kind of, it's a yes and on that, but it really would, the core on option three is preserving that 1.8 for something that we have yet to talk about.
Okay, well, I, I, I'm, I prefer option one since you clarified that. I forgot about that little piece. And I, I love the fact that we're using it for less amount of time, that, that levy. I, I would like, however, you know, if you got a budget, you got to know what you're getting for that budget. And I think I've been one of the most vocal here when we've seen the data brought forward. You know, Soldier's Field gets so much more use, Silver Lake doesn't. And to me, it's so bloody obvious why that is because there's not a lot of amenities at Silver Lake Pool. They've always pretty much been over at Soldier's Field. So I would really like us to maybe give enough feedback to parks so that they know what to bring back to us somewhat design wise with what we. so that they know what to bring back to us somewhat design-wise with what we might have an option for. And we've talked about definitely needing a lap pool for swim lessons. We've heard about that thoroughly from our community, needing more swim lessons. But I also want to make sure that there's enough amenities at that pool. And I'm, I'm not about the splash pad, I'm, I'm about having more amenities at a pool. Like I said, that, that 25 to 30-year-old facility that is going to be really revamped and enjoyable by all of us, but bringing something like that to Silver Lake. And I'm also going to be a stickler for the skate folks need some pretty significant maintenance on what is existing right now in the skate park. But can't we possibly give them both of those bowls? Can't we possibly give this, this demographic of folks a full-blown skate park that they've been asking for for at least 20 years?
And how much would that cost? And could we shift some of that 1.8 over to the skate park and raise the 0.5 just a little bit?
So let me clarify the skate park for you, first of all. So the project that we're looking at right now is about 1.2 million dollars. Right now, we've got allocated $350,000 out of our park referendum towards that dollar amount. We know there's granting that's going on right now, legislation going on about a new grant that's going to come forward. To what extent this costs match or cost sharing, we don't know that detail yet. We anticipate some cost share level, we don't know what that amount would be. So if we assume one to one, we'll seek a $350,000 grant to match our 350. If it's a two to one or 25%, that number just keeps going up and up and up. So again, we're going to pursue as big a funding project for the skate park as we can get with that $350,000. That's the best answer I can give you for right now. If you could choose to, you want to shift dollars around, that's a thing you can do. As far as the pool goes, I think I heard things differently from the last council meeting and what was being proposed. So we are proposing a learn-to-swim, basic community pool at Silver Lake. Not a big fancy thing, there'll be a splash pad there, which will have amenities. And again, a regular pool for lap swimming, learn-to-swim, that's the activity. That's what we heard taking away from that. There's lots of desires for other amenities, we sure appreciate that. That also comes with a price tag that goes along with that, which we do not have at $5 million.
But there's basketball courts, skate park, playground, all of those resources right there.
Turn my microphone on. No, the Silver Lake Pool needs to have more.
So I think just an important point is that there was a fair amount of talk from the majority of the council focusing on wanting to have a 25, I'm going to get the yard, I always want to call it meters, I'm not even from England, pool, and focusing on that. So that's what all of this is built around, is the bathhouse, being, being able to replace the bathhouse and to have a better experience here, continue with a pretty significant splash pad experience, different than any of the existing splash pads, which I would just also point out is free. And then having the added amenity of a pool where there's programming, which there's some opportunity for programming at Soldier's Field, but that will operate very differently. And so those who have always been able to experience programming at both pools likely will need more space available, and this would be a place for that. So as much as I appreciate that, like, I felt like we got a lot of clarity from the city council, the majority. Doesn't mean that your, your voice isn't important. But of course, when it comes to voting for the budget and it comes to voting for things, it, it's really important that we go with the most clarity that we have so that we're not constantly designing and redesigning and then never actually getting to implementation. So I, I just would point that out. I heard like five, I think six people maybe, in different ways, sharing that the more scaled version of the pool was what they were hoping to accomplish.
So the 25-meter, eight-lane pool doesn't even include that L-shaped cutout of a deep end for a high diving board or a low diving board?
I don't think we include.
Yeah, 25-yard, and it would be a basic rectangular-shaped pool, correct.
And I don't believe that we are able to include diving boards anymore.
We can, we've chosen not to. There is a depth requirement that you need to have for that. And again, there's liability that goes along with that, monitoring that goes along with that, it really eats away at your usable space. We talked about this at Soldier's Field Pool, too. And we've advised against it, our swim club has advised against that as well. It's just not, they aren't, they want to dive, then go to the rec center, that's our, our philosophy right now. It's a safe space that we can do that within.
Well, I'll just go out on a limb here and say that I think that that is grossly inadequate.
If I could, Council President and, and Council, one of the things we have talked about among our team is the advantage of the plan as it stands now, the 25-meter pool. It does give us a way to diversify and, and meet demand. For example, we, we know that the Soldier's Field Center, Aquatic Center is going to be a huge hit with, with families, but they won't be able to go there every day of the week, it, it just will be cost prohibitive. Silver Lake Pool gives us a chance to diversify, maybe provide, maybe you plan out your summer accordingly. You can have a free day at the splash pad, a different swim experience at the 25-yard pool, full-on recreation experience at Soldier's Field. And so I think there is an advantage to, to having, not trying to duplicate that experience at, at Silver Lake.
Thanks, I'm just thinking about all the Boys and Girls Club kids that go there so often during the summer, the, the neighborhoods surrounding the pool, northeast and south of the pool. And it's a greater burden for them to travel over to Soldier's Field for the same type of, same type of an experience. So many of my constituents have reached out to me saying that we need three or four pools in the city. Not saying I agree with that, but just having one pool in the city for the rate of growth that we're experiencing and going to continue to experience, I, I just, I think it's inadequate. I believe that in 10 years, we're going to be coming back and doing this process again. And I, I, I don't mean to be shooting the messenger at all, I really appreciate you bringing this back to us. You worked hard on these three options, I, I, I believe they're good options. I just wish that we could give the public more value for their dollar. It, it seems inadequate to me, so thank you.
And I hope through some of the other annual projects, we are doing that in other ways. I know our neighborhood park is being redone, and when we were on the call, people had 100 different ideas, and we have $100,000 and we have to stay within the budget. But making those projects as, as responsive to the neighborhoods is really important, too. And I do support the first option, I had a little concern about that 1.8 million and thinking about, is there something else that's really critical right now that we've identified as a priority that we would be taking away from and needing to sort of scramble and figure out another funding source? Or is this really an appropriate use given our priorities?
Yeah, ultimately, I mean, it was previously allocated to a project where we received other funding, so we don't have a great opportunity cost to put in front of you because we had been planning to use it in a different way.
Okay, well, that's reassuring then. First option sounds good to me, Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, thanks, I've got a couple of points. One, one, as far as the overall, like the thing you're talking about levy impact, I, I'm surprised it's 0.5. I guess I had viewed it as more, so I commend the staff for coming back and basically staying within the parameters of the, you know, the, the pool that we could afford at those kind of numbers. I, I, again, I would, just to add on to Council President Carlson's point, we are also spending the 1.8, and we're sort of taking it as free. And I guess it does belong to us and it doesn't have another use. But in a normal budgeting cycle, you do put those, that against many other priorities and weigh it out. And we're not doing that now, we're just saying, this is what we're going to do with it, and that's where we got to. As far as a 25-yard pool, and, and the idea that it's a teaching pool, do you have a feel, or can you tell me, it's shallow, it's, it's under three to four feet, up to 40% of it? Or it's, it's, it really is a teaching pool?
Yeah, great question. I believe it's about three and a half feet to four and a half feet deep. So again, pretty shallow overall, but one end is meant to have turning, you know.
Yeah, so one end drops.
Just slightly, yeah.
So you can do a turn, okay, that, that's understandable.
That's the goal of that, otherwise it's a standing area at the other end.
And then just thinking about some of the other special uses, is there any zero entry?
That's one design we are going to put into this, because again, that, one of the goals is to have adaptive rec there.
Yep.
On a consistent basis, so having not just a single wrap go in, but it more, Soldier's Field is like, it's called a beach entrance, pretty wide, long to get in that, in that lazy river area. It probably will be someplace between the two.
Okay, all right, good, I'm glad we're at least having those sort of, and I, I consider them features, especially when you think about how we've justified this in our public meetings, that, that we are reacting to those things. Go ahead.
Comment just real quickly, you're allowing us to do that because of putting a new bathhouse in there. If the bathhouse stayed and the pool stayed in the same location, the configuration would be kind of hemmed in.
Yeah.
Because that flexibility now is available to us, we're looking at all those design issues.
Okay. My next point's a little different, and again, it's just, I, I still sit here with the idea of, you know, this demand for outside pools. But, you know, let, let's be clear, we're here in Minnesota, we open up around Memorial Day, and we're closed by Labor Day. So we have about one-fourth of the year we get with these assets, three-fourths of the year. We don't do lessons, we don't do anything but maintain these things. Is there ever been any thought of having any sort of like covered pool? Or like it's outdoors, but it's like get another two or three months out of it, or it's just a bridge too far?
Do we have the money?
It's talked about each time we do this, and it boils down to that very topic, money.
Okay.
We looked at it as part of Soldier's very early on, it was a $4 million ad just for a basic covering.
Yeah.
It does not get you much.
Okay, yeah.
Again, at, at this pool, at Silver Lake Pool, it's probably a million and a half to $2 million to cover it. And again, what are you getting for it?
Yeah.
Fully heated and insulated, no it's not, it's going to be tempered barely.
Yeah, I'm still trying to get over the one out of four days a year that it's open.
The challenge, no doubt.
Yeah, that's, last thing is on operations, and again, I've had this discussion with Parks, but I want to just mention it here, too. When you do something like build a $5 million asset and say, what does it cost to run it? And I think we've got some really good operational things here where we're going to work with the swim club, and we've got ways of running this. But still, this is our chance now to say, what does it really cost to run a pool for 30 years? Or whatever we consider the useful life. If we were at RPU, we wouldn't put in a new service and assume that it's cheap at first, so that's how we'll do our rates. We do a thing that says, in order to make this work for 30 years, it's going to have these sort of maintenance bills worked in, and they set their rates accordingly. I, I know this is difficult at Parks, but that would be a way to make sure that when those bills come up five and 10 and 15 years from now, we put aside money to maintain a $5 million asset. I, I'm amazed that we talk about running the pool and we say $80,000 for chemicals as if we don't have like a lot of mechanical work or people to manage it and scheduling and just contracting. But that's what you put in front of us, it's reasonable. But to me, it just sets us up for the council that's up here in 2036 will be getting told, we, we don't have the money to run this, we now need more money, and that's unfortunate.
If I may, actually, Mr. Parrish brought forward a plan with option number one, to continue that half percent cost allocation towards paying off that loan balance, put that towards an ongoing maintenance fund or sinking fund that would cover that ongoing cost.
Yeah, see, I, I've heard him slightly different, I thought he was saying for the future capital impacts.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's an evolving proposal, I think.
Okay.
You know, so point well taken, anytime you make a decision here on making a capital investment, we, we see this, right? I mean, I'll take you back to your facilities conversation, and we should be allocating like 6 million a year, and we don't do that presently, but when we build a building, like, you know, what is our replacement cost scenario? What is our, you know, ongoing expense? And are we in the position to reinvest? And so I, I think it's a point well taken, I think it is something that as we bring, you know, kind of, we didn't necessarily bring this one forward, but like, you know, I think as we have these conversations, you know, what is the true annual cost? You know, if you want to contemplate replacement and ongoing maintenance. Because it is a, you know, if you take a useful life of an asset like this and put it at 30 to 50 years, and you're spending $5 million, well, like, simple math, you can do that, and what you should put aside annually for these things. You're hearing more of this at the legislature, like with the local bonding proposals, there's bills out there this year that say, if we give you the money for X, we want to know that you have a fund for future replacement because we don't want you back here in 25, 30 years to do that. So it's a point well taken, but it is a bit of a departure because we are sort of uniquely situated as a local government, we get a variety of one-time funding sources.
Yep.
And then we come back with these one-time funding sources. So it can seem a little bit chaotic, but it's also a reality of what we live in is we, we do receive a lot of one-time money, project to project to project.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bransford.
I just wanted to acknowledge the discussion here that, you know, there is a fiduciary responsibility that I think I've, I really appreciate the staff taking that into consideration in these options. I also think that I, I'm okay with the configuration, I'm not, you know, I was very vociferous saying, I want a pool, but I, I didn't say I wanted, you know, an amusement park. I mean, I think, I think we're going to get good value for what we've, what we're investing in. So I, you know, I understand the, the needs and the wants and, and the fiduciary responsibility we have. And I think that this is being balanced rather well by the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Palmer, then Dennis.
I had a couple of things. First of all, the pool's 65 years old, and so, you know, it lasted a long time. I don't think we've done much improvement in 25 years, in the last 25 years at that pool. The, the, one of the reasons that, that you want to have a seasonal pool is that you have seasonal employment. And if you're going to teach swim lessons, you have kids at, you know, January, February, March, they're in school. And, and so it helps to have an outdoor pool. The other thing in Minnesota, it, we have such a short period of the summertime, you do want to be outside. And so everybody wants to run to the pools when it's hot outside, you do want to have a good pool. And so, you know, I look at the need that's there, and what I've, I've, I know aquatics pretty well, and, and the need out there is for a, a lap pool, a teaching pool. And, you know, and they talk about 400 kids missing swim lessons, that we don't have something like this. That's why we invested this, this year to have that pool open. And so, you know, you do water aerobics, but also you have people who are going to show up and they're going to throw the ball around and play football, and they're in the teenage, where the splash pad is for the younger kids, and so that adds to that. But, you know, and eight-lane, 25-yard, I was heard before, it was eight feet deep, which adds some things that you could add later on that you can't for depth. And the other one is Able Rec. And I, and I don't want to, I, I don't think we should miss this one. You know, if Park and Rec is going to leave Able Rec at the fire station, and you can take these kids and walk them to the pool, that just makes their life so much easier and more fun, and, and that, that adds to that. And they don't really need anything more than a 25-yard pool that they can sit and splash around and go to the splash pad. So those are just some of the things that I've heard in these conversations, that, that, why I applaud that, that, that we came with option one. It gives us that flexibility and, and ability to do this for our community.
Thanks, Councilmember Palmer, Councilmember Dennis.
Okay. I, I agree that trying to make it so that in the future, if possible, to add a slide would be wonderful. If, it doesn't have to be a huge fancy slide, but I know just having a one or two small slides, having little races with friends, and just having a fun, I, I know there's a lot of personalities of youth who, and of all ages, but some aren't going to go to the pool necessarily and, and have a bunch of friends to play with, but those slides have been really good for, I know, people who maybe are neurodivergent or have social anxiety or things like that, and, and having something fun to do, I think would be a good to, see if possible in the future to add. And along with accessibility, I think is a huge plus, I appreciate that. I looked at the options, the, one, just I wanted to, option two, obviously, taking away from other needs is not what we want to do. I do not necessarily love, like, the term pitchforks and torches because I think it would be justifiable anger or frustration if people saw that their, their wants and needs were being taken away or being impacted. So I, I just want to point that out with that wording of, of that. But option three, I, the, what I kind of liked about that is, is they're spreading it out over more time. Because I feel like we don't need to impact the tax levy, even the 0.5% because I think there is things that we can do, and I mentioned this before in other council meetings, if we take a closer look at competitive bidding with consultants and projects and contracts, if we look at audits of departments in our city, I think we can find the money and wouldn't have to go and increase levy at all. But if we went through an option that extended it and not have such an impact in 2025, perhaps those kind of audits and reexaminating of our spending could be done. So I, I did like that aspect of having it not hit so much right away.
Can we just pause, and Mr. Parrish can clarify what was actually meant by the 13-year timeline?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the 13-year timeline is really, if you think about it, is like a home mortgage. You know, that's the, how many years you're going to pay on that. And so it is tying up, you know, that funding for that period of time versus.
But it's that 0.5% every year.
0.5%, so you can't really reduce that, it's still the same year because you're just paying more money. You know, instead of a $200,000 house, you bought a $300,000 house, and it's over a longer duration. And of course, you know, the, the point of the study session really is to have a good conversation with the council. If there's other ideas about, you know, other. the council, if there's other ideas about, you know, other, you know, things you want us to look at, we're certainly open to that, again, I think we have a very well, you know, run city, I think our investments are strategic, well thought out, we have a, you know, a great group of teammates who, you know, maximize the public dollar, we adhere to all competitive bidding laws, and so we're open to ideas and suggestions if you have alternatives here, but we just, you know, brought forward what we thought were three really feasible recommendations, or at least two.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification, so definitely not three as well, option three, so option one would be the option, if those were the only three to go with, that I would, I would support, and of course, like I said, look at ways, maybe, maybe a bonding, maybe a grant, I know we've, we've talked a lot about, there's a lot of grants being looked at to lessen this five million would be great, I do not think the contingency fund should be used because I, in my mind's eye, it's used for emergencies or unseen expenses, and, and we should not budget it for something, a project, I think, so I don't think we should necessarily look at that for this, however, I do feel that their creative staff and amazing expertise and minds could maybe see if there's other grants available, if we looked at it through the eyes of accessibility or the eyes of, of trying to make more impact on people's connections, belongings, mental health, everything, I think maybe we could find some means of funding this and helping taxpayers, so I would option one for those three options, thank you.
I'll just offer up for additional feedback that, you know, we certainly are always looking for grant opportunities, right, and if there is one that fits during the duration of this program, if you want to wait around for a grant, like, and not do the project, like, it could be a while, right, and you could just say this is a good idea, but it's just not advancing right now, but you're able to have the conversation around the one point eight million dollars because we did a project and because we didn't quit on it, and we still went and chased the grant even after you approved your project budget, because the opportunity was there and it was a good fit at the right time, so we do a lot of this, every month we get together and we look at all the grants that are out there, Cindy's done a great job of bringing Sustainable Strategies DC to Rochester, and we talk to them and say these are our needs, and where might our opportunities be and where do they fit, and we always have this, you know, thing we say, we got to say no to the good so we can say yes to the best, we can't chase everything, but we'll certainly keep this on the radar, and if there are those grants that are out there, we will chase them because we, no one more than us wants to lower the financial footprint of this, but this is a strategy to get it going now.
Excellent, any last comments? So park board approval and then our approval finally, or park board the final say?
Yeah, I think we would bring back the financing recommendation for council approval, and then as mentioned in their earlier slides, the design process would go park board council, then council bidding and approving bids.
Okay, exciting.
Just clarification, so like we do with Soldier's Field, we'll bring back to you the authorization to bid, then park board will take it from there to finalize a bid, approvals going forward for the contracts.
Okay.
But again, you have the final say on the project going forward.
Excellent, councilmember Kirkpatrick?
And we're going to hopefully start building this in 2025?
Hopefully we're going to start building in 2024, that's the goal right now.
Groovy, awesome, thanks.
All right, well, thank you for all your work on this, and looks like we're going to have another pool, so that's exciting.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Allen, it's over to you for study session schedule.
Sure, I just first remind everyone that April is an odd month for our schedule, next week is spring break for RPS and a number of other schools, so we do not have a council meeting on the first, it is not April Fools, it is April Fools, but that's not a joke, on the eighth you have your council meeting, and then on the fifteenth of April you have your study session, and again, on the twenty-ninth of April, so on the fifteenth you will have factors influencing the 2025 budget, so some information about the supplemental budget, you may see this again, in context with the rest of the budget, just another opportunity, and then we do plan to bring back the parking program and rate study that has been going on for the last couple of months, so probably a little bit related topics on that agenda, you'll note that we have a fair amount of time scheduled for those two items, and then moving forward later in April, we have planned for some city council training, we're still finalizing that, Bus Rapid Transit and the West Transit Village update, we do have neighborhood improvement meetings coming up for that, and then an update on the Destination Medical Center economics, so that's what you have.
All right, thank you everyone for being here today, we'll see you in two weeks.